Okay, I called to order the regular board meeting for the Board of Education for Park Ridge and Isle School District 64 for Thursday, October 8th, 2020. Before we call roll, as we've said in the last several meetings, due to COVID-19, it is prudent to have the meeting remotely instead of in person, but we are following all guidelines identified by the state. Carol, would you call roll, please?
Sure. Piaget?
Here.
Riles?
Here.
Sotos?
Here.
Pearl?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Selus?
Here.
Sanchez?
Here.
All present.
Great, thanks, Carol. Okay, Larry, would you do us the honor of please leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. So as we've done for the past several months, I just want to remind the community right now that we are live in person at Franklin School and the public is invited to attend the meeting in person. The entire board is not present. We do have one board member present along with several members of administration, but you are welcome to come. There is a limit on the number of people that we can have in the building and that is kept at 50 as a result of the Restore Illinois Guidelines and that will be strictly enforced tonight. If you wish to be heard by the board at any point during the meeting, you can either be in person and during the public comment on non-agenda items will allow folks to speak at that time or on particular agenda items, you can speak on that item when after the board has had its discussion on it, we'll turn it over to the public. In addition to that, we have an email address that's been posted on the board website and you can send in comments to that and they will be read into the record along with your name. We have several already that we've received for this evening that will be read during the public comment on non-agenda items. You can also again comment on any of the agenda items that we have teed up for this evening on our agenda. So with that, I'm going to move on to my opening remarks and I have just a couple of quick things to say before I turn the mic over. I'm going to see the rest of my time to Dr. Olson. But what I want to start out by saying, one is that I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community these past couple of weeks on the issue of reopening the schools and I just want to remind everyone tonight as we proceed in this meeting that we are a community, we are neighbors with one another. I expect that this meeting to be civil with one another. I expect there to be decorum. I know that the board does not tolerate incivility amongst itself when we conduct our meetings and we would expect the same from the community. We all are neighbors and I, what I hope is that, I know there's very strong feelings on both sides of the issue, not that there really should be a black or white, you know, Republican, Democrat, liberal, conservative view on this all, but I know there are strong feelings on both sides and I would hope that there, at no time tonight is anyone, any person's feelings been made to feel that they don't have a right to feel that way. This is a very individual, personal decision for every family to make with their child and I would hope that we would all remember that, not just the board, but the community as we speak tonight at this meeting. So the other thing that I want to say is that I know in reading many of the comments on some Facebook pages and emails that the board's received, there's been, I would say, a theme throughout many of them that the board has been derelict in its duties over the past several months in that one, we're not holding Dr. Olson, the superintendent of this district accountable for his decisions related to reopening the school and that we should be actively involved in those decisions going forward. And I'd like to touch on a couple of points on that. One is that when the pandemic started in the spring, I think it's safe to say that there wasn't a single meeting where the board didn't discuss at length with Dr. Olson issues related to safety, issues related to remote learning, to getting students back in school, staff, building facilities, everything that's related to that, I think that has taken place at every single meeting since the spring. In addition, on a weekly, if not more frequently than that basis, the board is kept in the loop and made aware of issues that are related to the hopeful reopening of the schools, the challenges that the district faces and at no time is the board kept in the dark from that. But I would also say it's important to know that over the last couple of meetings, this board had some very lengthy discussions on what its role should be in this process. And this board, these seven elected officials act as a board. They don't act as any one individual and not one of us gets to make a decision on behalf of the district. We act as a board and only a majority of the board can affect change, can affect policy in this district. So again, the discussions that took place, I thought were very, very thoughtful, very in-depth over these last couple of months. For better or worse, the board decided that it was not going to formally vote or ratify the plans that the administration put into place with regard to reopening the schools or remote learning. I think, you know, one could argue that we, one of the rationales that we had was that we felt it was getting too in the weeds, it was getting too much, as they say, on the dance floor rather than in the balcony and micromanaging the superintendent. But I think there's a far more important issue that one of my fellow board members raised at the last meeting, Mr. Sotos, when he said that if I'm going to be asked to vote on a plan to reopen the schools or to keep remote or whatever the plan is going to be, that I'm not going to do that based on a 15-minute PowerPoint presentation that we receive at a board meeting. I would expect to be in all of the meetings, all of the decision-making points along the way and that's not what this board's job is. This board's job is not to be an extension of the administration. This board is here as oversight over the administration and the district. That's our role. And again, for better or worse, this board decided, I don't think it was unanimously, but certainly a majority of the board, possibly a supermajority of the board, decided that that was the route it wanted to take at this last meeting. So I do take issue with the fact that it's been alleged and asserted that this board is not carrying out its duties as we've been elected to do by the public. I think we absolutely have. We have absolutely held Dr. Olson accountable for the decisions that he has made. At any time, this board has the legal authority to override Dr. Olson's decisions and I think it speaks volumes that this board has not done so. And I think that tells, that should tell the community where this board stands with regard to the decisions that Dr. Olson has made over the past several months with regard to the pandemic. So with that, I'm going to see the rest of my time on my opening remarks. I've asked Dr. Olson to give a presentation to the community on the reopening of schools and I'm happy to also have Erin Breen, the PREA president here tonight, who's also going to speak on behalf of our teachers, to talk a little bit about it as well. So Dr. Olson, if you would take it away.
All right, thank you. I'll first introduce Erin and let her go. She is the president of our teachers' union, Erin Breen.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Erin Breen and I am the president of the Park Ridge Education Association. I have been a teacher in District 64 for the last 20-plus years and nothing over my years as a teacher in the district has brought me more joy and purpose than working with my energetic first graders. It goes without saying that this has been my most challenging year, not being able to work with my students in person. And that being said, I am here to share tonight that the PREA, the organization that represents 400 teaching professionals, feels that it is now time to publicly state our membership's position with regard to the district's proposed hybrid plan. We have had ongoing conversations and bargaining with administration regarding the impact of this proposed plan. The teachers care about our students and the schools in Park Ridge. We all chose to work here because of the respected quality of education provided to students as well as the culture of professionalism that exists. We want you to know that the teachers of District 64 are committed, regardless of the learning plan we are implementing, to providing our students with the best learning opportunities possible. Teachers are problem solvers. We answer countless questions every day in the classroom. However, the one question we cannot answer is how is the District 64 continuing together hybrid plan? What's best for the education of the students of District 64? We surveyed our own members regarding this proposed hybrid plan and 87% of the members of the Park Ridge Education Association believe the district's hybrid plan is not what's best for the education of our students. While we understand the pressure administration is under to open up schools for in-person learning as soon as possible, we do not agree with their plan. As the teachers in the classroom and those entrusted to educate the students of District 64, it's important for our collective voice to be heard. PREA understands and respects that the district has the right to implement whichever model they feel is necessary during these uncertain times. However, we believe a huge part of any successful hybrid plan must include the professional input of the teaching staff as well as we will be the ones implementing it. We believe there are issues that need to be addressed at each education level. At the elementary level, we want to make sure we're providing the same high-quality, equitable education for all of our students. However, the district's plan calls for simultaneous instruction for three different groups of students, those that have chosen to be completely remote, those that are remote three days a week and those that are in person. As educators, we strongly believe providing the same quality of education for each of these groups would be extraordinarily difficult if not possible. The lack of consistency in a learning platform will make it very challenging to teach what is essentially three classrooms at the same time. Not to mention, we will be coordinating the additional safety requirements and precautions in the in-person settings. No student's education should suffer because of the method through which they are learning. We would like to work to find a better way to make sure all our students are getting the education they deserve. At the middle school level, teachers are being asked to teach their elective class remotely while also supervising students in a homeroom. Students are being asked to stay in their homeroom for exploratory classes, focus on their Chromebooks, put their headphones on and participate, make art, sing, play an instrument and speak a foreign language simultaneously in the same classroom. This will happen for all three exploratory periods. Seventh and eighth grade students will be in school two half-days for their core classes only. Students will stay in their homerooms for their blocked core time. Core teachers will rotate in their homerooms. Students will be taught remotely from home for their elective block. To make the schedule work, homeroom rosters and class rosters must change in the middle of the trimester. No matter what grade level we are teaching, a huge concern is how to effectively teach in-person and remote students at the same time. We are thankful of the Illinois Department of Public Health and Illinois State Board of Education Guidelines, but the reality is that for the in-person students, they will be sitting six feet apart from each other and facing forward, masks on, with no opportunity for collaborative work. Teachers will need to stay at a safe distance while being mindful of remaining in front of the camera for those students learning remotely. Teachers will have to address the needs of students in the classroom and at the same time, address students at home by viewing them in a monitor and listening to them with a laptop speaker in the classroom. On this point, both the administration and PREA agree that something will have to give. There will be a group of students not getting the necessary attention. Due to the described logistical issues, the Park Ridge Education Association believes that the current hybrid model is not sustainable. Additionally, the members of Park Ridge Education Association continue to believe that students and staff are at a moderate or high safety risk. We're concerned with the cleaning plan, the lack of increased maintenance staff, students eating without masks in classrooms and students sharing equipment at recess. There are many safety issues that we don't feel have been dealt with appropriately. We're concerned for the well-being of our students and ourselves. So tonight, we are asking for our voices to be heard, for our suggestions to be a part of the ongoing conversation around doing what's best for our students, our schools and our community. We recognize this unprecedented time is extremely trying for our students and our parents, our community members, administration and for us as teachers. We are all doing the best we can. We look forward to continuing conversations with the district to get the best possible plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Erin. So I'm going to share my screen here. And we thought it'd be helpful to do an overview of the process that we've gone through this summer and this fall, leading to where we are today. So first of all, I'd just like to express my appreciation to everyone. Nobody has had any training for this. Our world has not had any training for this. This was put upon all of us and we are all having to deal with the weight of this virus. We are exhausted as parents. We are tired as workers and educators and administrators. You know, we are challenged by all the guidelines that we have to follow and I think that we are all having such a hard time that it is making some of the difficulties come out. Okay, all of you talking isn't helping. Can you hear me now? Moving on. So in terms of priorities, you know, we have always put the safety and health of our students and our staff as the number one item that we are working towards, that will always guide our decisions throughout the rest of this year and the time that we are dealing with the virus. We are also continually working to bring back students full-time. That is the goal. We want to work as hard as we can until we get to the point where we can have all students in our buildings full-time and we will continue working to get to that point. There are some major challenges for school districts this year in regard to the virus. The first one is the fact that, as I said this summer, our schools were not built for a pandemic. We have been working for the past 50 years to try to get students to be with each other, to talk more to each other than they do to the teacher, and we have set up structures and environments in order to allow students to interact with each other as much as possible. With the health guidelines and the social distancing, we cannot meet those needs in the same way that we have before. And so it has been the big challenge of all school districts to have to look at all of the structures, all of the systems that we have in place and really are redoing all of them because we have to meet this new environment that's going to provide a place for learning while also ensuring that everybody remains safe and healthy. A second challenge that comes along is staffing and staffing involves all aspects of the district, administrators, teachers, teaching assistants, custodians, maintenance workers, secretaries, and then it also gets into substitutes and bus drivers and lunchroom supervisors and all those pieces. Just to give an example, last week, our HR department received seven in one day of staff changing their mind and choosing to go a different direction than they had before. This week, we had a day where there were five of those. I'm not in any way blaming staff. I'm just saying that what tends to happen is different medical needs arise, different situations change in people's lives and each of those things affects the school district. So it's very challenging for us to continue to stay on top of all of the staffing needs as we continue to go forward. I think the next piece is the fact that all of the delays. If any of you have tried to order things online, you've probably been surprised with the amount of time that some objects are taking to get to you, most likely when it comes in terms of furniture. Well, we are dealing with those same delays. So everything that we are trying to get from curriculum to PPE is all on delay. And so another role of school districts is working extremely hard to find the right materials and ensure that they arrive on time. And then lastly, as I shared earlier this summer, that this process is like layers of an onion and every time we peel back another layer, there ends up being another set of challenges that we have to meet. And as we go down to the next layer, we find the next set of challenges. And so a lot of time is just being spent going through each aspect of the plan and discovering those challenges and working through them. In regard to the parent survey results of the survey that we just recently gave out, 70% of our parents chose to have hybrid until November 20th and 30% chose full remote learning until November 20th. In terms of looking back at the summer, the state guidelines were released in late June and we presented our hybrid plan to the community in late July. That has not changed since that time. When we presented that plan, it was our intention to start the school year in the hybrid model. So why did we just, then why did we change our minds and decide to go to full remote to start the year? And really what it basically came down to is that I could not welcome staff and students safely into the building. We have had challenges with hiring enough custodians, health aides, and then as I mentioned earlier, just all the different positions that continue to change and we have to pivot to meet those needs as they occur. Once that it was clear that we were going to the hybrid model, there were just so many different areas that staff had to work through, finding medical paperwork, you know, thinking about whether they wanted to retire or take a leave. And there were a lot of staff, all kinds of staff, that had to work through those pieces in order for us to be able to open school and there were way too many of them in order to be able to start when we had intended. So at that point, we made the decision that we were going to start in full remote and that we would bring students back in October. This has nothing to do with people's dedication level or their commitment to this job. It just had to do with the fact of how many different personnel pieces had to be figured out in order for us to successfully open school. But by us saying that there is an announced plan that we were going to bring students back in October, then what that does is it's going to go back to the hybrid plan. So the plan we released in July, we then said was on hold for the month of September and now we're going to start it in October. So then why are we moving back to the hybrid plan now? So we are returning to our original intent. We want to have students, you know, back into the building and we feel that this is the safest way to do that at this time. The staffing continues to evolve and we will continue to pivot to meet those needs, but these are some of the challenges that make it difficult to bring students back into the building. So where are we now? So I'm really glad that we decided to have staggered starts. This will be a lot better for our staff and our administration in only having one-third of the students back in the building next week and then to have the other two-thirds join them the following week. We are then looking to already start adding more programs in the building where students can travel and go to other locations. For instance, we were disappointed that we weren't able to provide C of C at the elementary level where students could go out and go to a separate class. That is one of the first areas that we're looking to change that. So as we look at the different opportunities and as we experience school over the next couple of weeks, we can start to add more and more pieces to the students' day to make it resemble closer and closer to what we're used to. So why did we choose the hybrid model? So first of all, there is quite a large cost if we were to try to do an AM and a PM. We have to create extra buses. We have to transport students twice as much as we would normally do and we also would have to have an entire force of custodians to try to clean all of the rooms just for the afternoon group. Those school districts that have, okay, I'm sorry, this is a board meeting and you are allowed to view as the public that we are having a board meeting. You're not allowed to interrupt, you're not allowed to ask questions, you're not allowed to do that. We have a time when you will be able to do that. I won't interrupt you at that time. I would ask you not to interrupt me. So secondly, so first of all, I need you to put your mask on. Second, if we need to ask somebody to leave, we will certainly do so. I need you to be in control of yourself. Thank you. So in terms of not defaulting to the parent-led instruction, for the districts that have started to do an AM and a PM, they are in most of those cases having one group of students learn in the morning and then they're repeating the same lesson in the afternoon. So what's happening is by us having students in for a full day on Monday and a full day on Tuesday or vice versa on Thursday and Friday, this allows us to have instruction all day long and not have to default to letting, you know, parents be the ones that are doing our instruction. We heard that loud and clear from our parents in the spring that they did not want to be the teachers. They wanted to have the classes and the opportunities so students would primarily be able to do this on their own. Next, by having this model, we have greater flexibility and being able to meet student needs. Because we have our model of a Monday, Tuesday and a Thursday, Friday, and we're not repeating things in the afternoon, this allows us to have the days to bring in more students that have higher needs. So for our at-risk students, we feel that this model helps them as well. Then it's a full comprehensive day. Those school districts that have done an AM and a PM, there is a couple of hours in the middle of the day that they need to stop in order for them to do all the cleaning that needs to occur for the afternoon. We like this model because our students are in school all day long. Obviously, that's not able to happen right now for our seventh and eighth grade, but we are looking to bring them back as soon as we can. Also, hybrid is sensitive to the needs of working parents and we felt that that was better for them to have their students at school for a full day than to have half-days throughout the week where they might not be able to pick up their children or bring them to school. In terms of going forward, our hybrid plan currently runs through November 20th. We are forming a pandemic advisory committee made up of parents, teachers, teacher assistants and community members to look at the pandemic and talk through as different groups what we can possibly do as we go through our plans going for the future. I think what's important is that in the last week, there's been all this talk about moving to a five-day model, but we've been trying to plan for hybrid since July and now we're a week before we're going to start and we're having this whole new conversation. I certainly understand that there are parents that are frustrated and parents who feel that students should be in school five days a week. I don't fault anyone for that opinion. I certainly understand that. But in order for me to follow the guidelines and have students in school safely, I need to be able to provide an environment where I know that staff and students are going to be able to function. We are just about to start in-person learning. I would like to be able to start school and stay in school. I don't want to start school and then we're already back to closing down schools and moving into remote learning because we don't have everything in place. So everybody, staff, parents, administration, everyone's focused on trying to open up our schools successfully next week. I don't feel right now is the time to be launching into the next step of the plan. I also feel that we're going to learn a lot as we go through the next two weeks. Certain ideas we had are not going to play out the way we thought. We might discover new pieces that we didn't know that that would happen or we might find that things worked better than we thought they would on this or on that. So I think it's important for us to study the next couple of weeks and embed that into our planning going forward. I do want to continue to work to bring students back to school five days a week full-time. I understand that there are parents that want to know exactly how that's going to work and I am fine to put out that information within the next couple of weeks, but right now, we are trying to focus on starting school in our hybrid plan. Thank you. All right, Rick, I'll give it back to you. All right, Rick, I'll give it back to you.
Is my audio working now? Sorry about that. I was having technical difficulties on my end. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public comment section of the meeting right now. So this is public comment on non-agenda items. As you know from the agenda, for those who are either in person or watching online, we have several other issues on there. If you want to speak on anything that is not actively on the agenda, and I would include the reopening as an issue that's not on the agenda this evening, then now would be the time for us to do so. So I think what we're going to do is take the email messages that have come in, either during the meeting so far or prior to the meeting. We'll read those first into the record along with the names, and then we'll move on to folks that are present at Franklin School tonight.
Rick, I'm sorry to interrupt. In light of COVID and having all those people present there, would it be maybe more prudent to allow those people to come speak and exit the building after they were done speaking so that we can alleviate the amount of people that are in that space and then read the emails which don't pose a COVID issue?
Sure. I think that's a great idea, Tom. If the board's okay with that, I'll flip that around and we'll go that way. Okay. All right, then, before we move to the live public comments, I'm going to read a statement that we do at every meeting, and that is that each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools. Each person appearing before the board will be treated with courtesy and respect, and the board requests the same in return. In light of the privacy of personnel and student matters, commenters are strongly discouraged from speaking about individual staff or students during public comment. Commenters are instead encouraged to first raise such concerns privately with the board, president, or administration. The board, however, recognizes each commenter's First Amendment rights. Thus, it will not prohibit commenters from speaking about individual staff or students, subject to well-recognized exceptions under the First Amendment, such as obscenity, threats, fighting words, or incitements to violence. So with that, I will invite people to come up one at a time. Dr. Olson, is there someone who's kind of monitoring that right now to make sure that this is orderly?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great. And so we'll do that. And there is Carol, you've got the timer going? Great. All right, and so we will do that. I just want to remind, I know it was said in the comments, but this is not an opportunity for a dialogue with the board. This is your opportunity to voice your public comments, and the board will take that under advisement, as will the administration. If there are specific issues that warrant a response from the board or the administration, we will do so after this meeting, either in person via phone or by email, but this will not be a time in which the board is going to have back and forth with any of the email comments or the public comments that are going to be made tonight. So with that, I'll invite whoever is first to speak.
Okay, we'll start over on this side.
Dr. Olson, can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, those of us on virtual can't hear the speaker right now.
Also, if we can ask people to identify themselves, please.
Yes, and I forgot to mention that. Whenever you do come up, if you could identify yourself, that would be helpful as well.
So the rules are that when you're in a school building, you have to wear a mask at all times.
Can we get the speaker a microphone because we can't hear what they're saying?
Can you hear her?
It's very faint.
All right, can everyone hear me now?
Yep, but we've got a lot of feedback.
So do we hear?
Can you try again and see how that is now?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, that's better. Still a little bit of feedback, but much better.
Okay, so I'm not being facetious when I say I feel for our teachers and students because this is the type of learning delay that is happening when we're relying on all remote teaching technology. So it's a good segue for my remarks. My name is Harmony Harrington. I'm a proud parent of three D-64 grade school and middle school students. Thank you all for your continued board service. I'm sure none of you envisioned that you would have this role during a pandemic, making these tough policy decisions, to best serve our D-64 students. And I know that each of you, like me, as I continue to serve on our own park board here in town, carry with you the full weight of responsibility of trying to make the best decisions during this time to ensure that our students receive the best education possible. And this gravity of the situation that we are all facing is not lost on me nor any of these other parents here tonight. Millions have been infected with COVID-19, and many have died from the complications associated with the virus. But unfortunately, this virus is going to be with us for a very long time, and the optimist in me yearns for a quick vaccine, but those too take time to ensure efficacy and that enough of us are vaccinated. So how do we ensure our children are receiving the best education possible during pandemic? We cannot start from a place of excuses or paralysis. The best place to start is a full strategic plan, which we should have had this summer, that is able to wax and wane between full remote learning, hybrid, in-person learning, and full in-person learning, as the local metrics and the spread dictates the varying levels of precaution needed. It needs to be able to provide remote, hybrid, in-person, and full in-person instruction capabilities, and not an easy task for 4,500 students and over 600 staff, but other similar-situated districts are proving that it's possible and have been for weeks. It was my understanding that during the summer months, these were supposed to be planning and development times where our district would look at spacing, staffing, resources, necessary safety precautions, review peer districts and emerging best practices to develop the plan, especially after polling families who weathered and supported crisis remote learning in the spring with a "we are all in this together" attitude and had to adapt and all do the best we can. And as you mentioned, Dr. Olson, 70% of families asked this district to develop an in-person learning plan for the 2021 school year, when polled in May, and again when polled in September. Unfortunately, our parents in this district have yet to see this comprehensive plan, and I understand, according to the board president and yourself, that the board has ceded development of a plan and a model to you as our superintendent. And while I can appreciate not micromanaging, I do think our board has a responsibility to ensure that the plans and the model fit what the community is asking for. I think my time may be up. I think my time may be up, but I will just start and say, we needed to start from a place of yes, we can for our students, instead of no, it's not possible.
Anybody else in that first row? Yeah, you can do that.
Hello. Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Doreen Curry. I have three kids, a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and freshmen. My son, who is in fifth grade, is not in D-64. I moved him to St. Paul, St. Paul the Cross in Park Ridge. He struggled with e-learning in the spring, struggled looking at the screen all day, struggled completing his work. He struggled. He is 10, and a 10-year-old boy needs to be in school. I pulled him from a school I loved, Carpenter School, from a school that I had been at for 10 years, from teachers that I know and love and a principal who is one of the best because my 10-year-old son needed to be in school. He could not learn this way. And guess what? He goes to school every day. He goes Monday through Friday, eight to three. He was in school for a month. Yes, I'm sure you heard recently that St. Paul the Cross shut down. It shut down for two weeks. He was back in school yesterday. So he has been in-person learning for six weeks, home for two, and he's already back, when we're still, still trying to figure out a way to get our kids in. He's happy. He's a happy kid because he goes to school. They had a plan. They had a plan for what would happen if families got sick. Two families got sick, they're back in school. He is back in school. That's my happy son. I have two daughters. My daughters are another story. My younger daughter Emily is in seventh grade at Emerson. She works in the basement every day. I don't allow my kids to do school in their room because that's their room where they sleep. They need a spot to learn, and they need a spot to do their work. I watch my beautiful, talented daughter get up and get dressed and spend the day in her basement. She comes up for breaks. She comes up when she needs to eat. She's isolated at home and alone all day. Do any of you women especially remember what it's like to be a seventh-grade girl? It's awful. Middle school is horrible, and they're not in school and they're home alone. You think this is better for them than being in school with the possible risk of getting sick when we have all these precautions in place? Guess what? 73% of the families of D-64 want to go back. We want that opportunity. We are not afraid. Our kids are not afraid. They want to go back to school. You need to start... You need to start taking care of the 73% who pay for our teachers and our administrators. You've catered to the 27% for the last seven months. It's time for our kids to be able to go to school. We are done. Our kids are done. Sending my daughter two days a week for three hours a day is not going to cut it. It's not. The virus is not going away. We all know that it's not. You need a common sense plan for these kids to survive middle school. Look at our neighboring communities. They are doing it. Look at St. Paul. St. Paul is doing it. It's a disgrace and a disservice to our kids and our community. Our ex-supervisor used to sign her emails for your children. This hybrid model of six hours a week is not for our children. Who is it for?
Anyone else in these first three rows? Anybody would like to come up?
Hi, my name is Diane Hamel. I am the parent of an eighth-grade student at Lincoln. First and foremost, I want to state that the teachers in my son's core and our principal have been nothing short of magicians and miracle workers, working countless hours to help our children. Dr. Olson, this is not a hybrid plan that you have put forth to us. This plan is nothing more than having our students, who are on Zoom today, do Zoom in a classroom with headphones. We are asking our teachers to go above and beyond already, but to ask them to try to teach in front of a screen to students that are at home trying to learn and students who are in the classroom focused on their screens, that is not a hybrid plan. That is just Zoom in a classroom. I expect more from the superintendent of this district. You mentioned pause. You mentioned pause. I am appalled that this board gave Dr. Olson a raise, and he had not met the goals that had been put forth to him. The reasoning behind it was because of COVID? There are people in this community that have been financially impacted by COVID. Goals not met. They didn't get their bonuses. They didn't get a raise. You sit here today and tell me that it's cost that is prohibiting my child from being able to come back to the classroom? And to sit in front of his teacher and learn face-to-face? I'm sorry, that is not acceptable. I am one of the people in this community who is able to hire a tutor to come each week to sit face-to-face and help my child with math, science, LA, social studies. Do you know what he said to me? Mom, can we just do this every day so that I don't have to sit in front of the screen when my head hurts and my eyes burn? This is not acceptable. Appendix B for Phase IV Transition Plan, as it is outlined in the IBIS Part III Plan, clearly states that communication with families, it is imperative that communication with students and families become more consistent and more frequent as this transition to in-person, in-person learning and instruction, and/or blended remote learning days occurs. It goes on to state that it's important that schools and districts over-communicate. We have not seen this. The emails we receive have no substance similar to this plan you have delivered to us. What I have, however, seen in a recent email is you attempting to cover your own behind after making misleading statements that became socialized throughout the community. I'm sorry, too little, too late. It is clear from sitting here, Dr. Olson, that you become incredibly frustrated very quickly, and you're very quick to close people off and shut them down. I have deep concerns about your ability to effectively lead this district. That same document I referenced earlier to in-person instruction, it says may resume in Phase IV, as long as you follow the IDPH guidelines. Nowhere in there does it say Phase V with a vaccination can our children get back to school and in-person. This board and the administration has had months to develop a comprehensive plan, a plan that would include in-person learning. We do not need more Zoom meetings, Dr. Olson, and in our school board. We need more classroom meetings. I do not think it is feasible for a full five-day plan to be implemented, but I do believe with some thought and some strategy, this board and this well-paid superintendent can offer five half-days of in-person core learning to the students who wish to return, and that I believe is 73% of this community. These students, they are mentally, physically, and emotionally drained. They are suffering because they are having issues understanding the concepts that are being delivered in a Zoom meeting after... being delivered in a Zoom meeting after hours and hours each day. I know what I feel like after being on conference calls and Zoom meetings all day, but I am an adult, and that is my job. All they're asking for is an education. These students, whose mental health is equally as important as anything else, we can point to school districts around this state, who others have referenced, who have plans in place and laid out since July. I know you sit here and you think, oh, St. Paul, the Archdiocese of Chicago published their plan in July, in July, and that included return to school, return to learning. We have returned to Zoom in a school building. Please, for the sake of our children, give them what they deserve.
My name is Katie Cassidy. I have an eighth-grade daughter at Emerson. I have a freshman at Maine-South. Three weeks into school, I walked into my daughter's room. She had her head down. She was crying. She was pulling out her eyebrows. She's like, I can't do this, Mom, no matter what happens, or no matter what they say. I can't listen to any human being for that long, and give me three-minute breaks. I can't go to the bathroom in three minutes and get a glass of water. A three-minute break. Sit at your computer all day and have a three-minute break and a 30-minute lunch. Like, it's insane. I said, okay, we need to talk. This isn't working for you. You're sinking. You're hurting. You're failing. Failing classes, Ds, Fs. She's like, I don't know where to go. I don't know. I'm supposed to be in this class, but Schoology isn't working. So I guess I have to check my email, and I have to go into another link, but I'm 20 minutes late, and now I'm scared that I'm late, and they say I'm tardy, or I sit in a waiting room for 20 minutes. I reached out to the principal. I said, what are my options? Can I pull this kid out of her electives? Because I need her to learn her core classes, and she's so disturbed that she's getting Fs and Ds because she doesn't know how to learn like this, that I need to pull her. You know what she said to me? She said, Mom, you can't do that. I said, yes, I can, Chloe. I can homeschool you for your electives. Homeschool you, right? What's that mean? Really means nothing, right? She can jump on the trampoline. She can watch TV. She goes, Mom, those teachers need their jobs. I'm not going to be homeschooled and have people lose their jobs. If I do it, what if everyone does it? What will happen to the Emerson teachers? Because she cares. This child cares about our teachers. I didn't really care at that moment about the teachers until she said that to me. Guess what? It got worse. I had to email the principal yesterday and said, pull her out of her electives. I walked in her room again. She's crying. She's thinking. She's looking at her after-class at her grades. D, D, uh, B. She's like, I can't do this. It's not possible. Earlier, Dr. Olson, you said in your speech that you spent 50 years building these schools for kids to be in these schools and to engage each other, right? Because what we're doing to our children is inhumane. It's not right. You need to change it. That's your job.
Okay, but you're taking the time away from somebody else.
Good evening, District 64. My name is Chandra Kearney, and I'm a mother of four. I've been following our district, as well as other districts, to see what plans were being made for this school year. One of these districts is now led by our former superintendent, Dr. Lori Hines. District 15 is in the northwest suburb of Palatine. It is the second-largest elementary district in Illinois with approximately 12,300 students. It serves serving part of seven communities with grades pre-K through eighth. They have 15 elementary schools, four junior highs, one early education and alternative school, and approximately 2,000 staff members. Their plan is known as the Return to Learn Plan. The district started working on their plan in March. In August, the plan had been modified to include the following: required face masks for all with disciplinary action for those who don't comply; not more than 50 people in one space spacing students out as much as possible; understanding that every classroom configuration, though, with the capacity and class size may vary. They were working with architects to reconfigure class spaces to ensure the greatest amount of social distancing possible; implementing a self-certification symptom check for students by their family prior to the school, with each student receiving lanyards that registered those completed checks. There's a temperature check at every day at the doors that the students are assigned to. The district had hired 40-plus certified teachers, as she had considered the medical accommodations of the existing staff in case they couldn't go back; training of subs for both virtual and in-person learning. They went from, I believe, 120 subs to 150-plus subs and more signing up. Additionally, they hired more staff with the help of nurses to help the nurses, custodians, and recess lunch supervision for each school. Their junior high is very similar to our district, except that all sixth, seventh, and eighth grades attend two full days of schooling. Dr. Hines further said in a board meeting in August that they had put their best foot forward and are ready to respond and pivot if things need to change. Their rolling plan began the week of September 21st with kindergarten, and it completes next week with fifth to eighth graders, at which time all elementary school will go full-time five days a week. 70% of their children are back to in-person learning. 70% of their parents wanted their kids back in school, and she accommodated it. Our district is now in a situation where our students will not have equal and adequate learning time, and our teachers will have to create a wheel for both in-person and remote learners. There is no reassurance by our district or the Board of Education right now that their ultimate goal and plan is to return to school plan and not just a plan for hybrid learning. My final question is to you, Dr. Olson, is have you reached out to the former superintendent, Dr. Hines, to ask her about her successful reopening plan? And if not, it is a disservice to our teachers and the parents of this district. Thank you.
I'm Chris Kilkberg, and we need to go back to school. I used to go to Field and my mom, because I now go to Mary's with them because my teacher resigned, and she only worked there for eight years, and I didn't take her very long. So Mary's with them is in person, and I think the schools that are not in person should be in person. It's unfair. If all the schools, like all the private schools, they're in person, but all the public schools, they're not even going in person. Just why? They need to be in person.
Hi, my name is Ashley Kilburg, and I moved to Park Ridge five years ago. One of the specific reasons that we chose to move to Park Ridge was so that our children could benefit from D64 and D207 schools. We are an industrious community, and I cannot tell you how disappointed I am in our lack of planning and our lack of just putting forth the best ideas that I have heard. We have had wonderful ideas in the last couple of weeks, and I'm just befuddled why we are not doing them and implementing them. For example, why did you not ask us, there's 50 parents in this room, why did you not send out a request this summer for all of us and the hundreds of other parents to become certified as substitute teachers? You talk about a problem with staffing. We could have helped you with that. You offered another excuse of lack of funding. Again, we are a community of very generous people, some very successful people. Why were we not asked to privately fundraise? I personally would have been very willing to privately fundraise to get adequate and proper protective gear for our teachers. I adore our teachers. I respect them, and I would love for them to be in their classrooms, working with students safely. I personally would have volunteered to clean. I would have come in during that shift between the A and B groups if we chose a hybrid with morning and afternoon. I personally would have come in and cleaned classrooms, and I bet you every person here would have done so. I have heard more excuses tonight than solutions, and that is not the type of person I am, and that's not the type of people that are sitting here. This is incredibly disappointing to come to a meeting tonight and to not hear solutions. We don't have problems. We have solutions. We know the problems. We all know them. We have lived them for the last seven months. Where are the solutions that allow a lot of children to get back into in-person learning, which is obviously better for their education, for their social-emotional growth? We have children that are literally sinking into a black hole of apathy, of depression. These are real things that I can pinpoint and point to, and we know they're happening, rather than pinpointing and pointing to the fear of a virus that we know very little about. And I am not downplaying it. I am not. But I am just saying that the other factors that are occurring by keeping our children out of school are very real and very scary. Please help us get our children back into school more fully.
My name is Krista Ward. I have three children, none of which are in D64. They actually are at Maine-South, but I feel so strongly about this, and I'm here to support my community. And I'm going to wait until the end to tell you about my kids, because I'll probably start crying. First, I had to adjust what I was going to say based on some of the things that were said tonight. The first thing is, and I know it was attributed to you, but I'm not going to believe any quotes of who said what anymore, because I don't know that them to be true, but I'm very disappointed to hear that our board is not going to get actively involved and vote on a plan and not micromanage. That is not what we have a board for. So I was really, really disappointed to hear that. And if that's only one board member, so be it. If it's all of you, then it might be time for a new board. That's one thing. Second, and I know it was already spoken to, but I will be doing a FOIA request on the data to show that we cannot handle or afford what we need for our children. That is our right to get that information on the school and the size and the PPE. I happen to work in supply and demand and supply. There is no shortage anymore. It's all gone. All the shortage was in the spring. There's plenty of PPE. And the amount of taxes we pay, I'm sure we have money, but we're also willing to fundraise. So the third thing is, we got a misrepresentation, which I heard 87% of the teachers didn't want to come back for the hybrid model. What we were told, 87, 90% of the teachers don't want to be in the school. What we heard tonight was they don't agree with the hybrid model. Okay, so my question to the board is, what are you going to do about that if your teachers don't agree with your plan? And second, they listed two main things, safety issues, which in my opinion, I'm calling BS on that, because there's plenty of ways to address those safety issues. And the second one is really important. And the reason they don't want to be hybrid plan is because they can't teach remote and in-person, and I don't remember what she said about the third one. So what are we going to do about that? Because our teachers are our teachers, and it seems to me that you guys have a really big issue with the teachers' union not agreeing with the plan that you have in place. But that's not to say they don't want to teach our children. So I'm interested to hear what you're going to do about that, because that was a pretty eye-opening statement tonight by the union. Okay, and then back to my kids. There was an article today that was published that referenced a whole bunch of experts in the education field, basically saying that our kids are going to lose from four to 14 months of learning, and I agree with that. I have three children. My daughter is getting straight A's, but gains probably 25 pounds since the spring and is depressed. And I see notes about how she misses her friends and how she misses interactions. She's getting straight A's, but she's a royal mess. My son, who's been in AP classes, C of C, whatever we call it, I can't remember, straight A kid, he's flunking, just to your point, flanking five of his seven classes. And he's being held responsible and saying he's not motivated, he's not doing his work. We expect more. He's a junior. They can't learn like this. And to someone's point, I can't even handle an hour Zoom call at work without looking at my phone or doing something, because it's droning on and on and on and looking at a screen. We need a better plan. I'm very disappointed.
My name is Daniella Fuchsaw. I have three kids at Field, and I'm speaking as a mother of four, three of whom attend Field, as a kindergartner, a second grader, and a third grader. Luckily, my youngest has been attending preschool at Christie's. That leads me to my first point. If a facility likes Christie's... Sorry. ...can provide a safe learning environment for children, there should be no reason why District 64 cannot. My three girls, who are hooped up at home attempting to learn remotely, are struggling. You cannot expect an eight-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a five-year-old to devote their undivided attention to a computer screen for almost seven hours a day. It would be a very difficult feat, even for us adults. They crave attention. They crave friendship. They crave feedback. They crave a way to express themselves. They are not getting this while remote learning. Not long ago, our government decided that it was time to lift restrictions on our businesses, knowing the severe long-term impact on our economy. In those businesses, remain closed. Yet our children, who are far more important than any business in this world, remain closed, and they're in our homes. and are in our homes. The long-term impact on their mental health and the mental health of their parent, of their parents is a greater risk than which has been caused by the virus. It is time to open up our schools and return to normalcy. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Susannah Jolinkovic. I have been a resident of Park Ridge for over 20 years. And my youngest is attending eighth grade at Lincoln. The current model is a start, but it should be improved and expanded upon. Accepting this model as finite is not a possibility until you can prove that you have exhausted all points for improvement, such as looking at a variety of plans implemented by other comparable districts, exploring next steps, including metrics, looking at additional space options, reducing the burden on teachers to teach in-person and remote students simultaneously, developing safety protocols a majority of staff and teachers can feel comfortable with, having considered the mental and physical health of the students beside the SEL efforts put forth, having considered that there will be no resolution to the virus anytime soon, and having acted proactively, having been transparent in your communication to all. Now have you? Let's remember who's at the center of this. It's the students. The focus should remain on them. Everybody has their opinions, but we can all agree that students deserve the best possible education under these circumstances. Unprecedented times indeed, that require unprecedented leadership, action, communication, cooperation, proactiveness, and that involves all of you. Indeed, indeed, it is a complicated and difficult task, but it is also time to tackle it. Will there be hiccups? Most definitely. But none that cannot be overcome if we work together as partners. Return to in-person school can be scary. I am one of those people who is back in-person. I work mostly with very young students, and I'm amazed how well they have adjusted to safety guidelines, including wearing masks. As one of my coworkers put it, the anticipation is worse than actually living it. Then finally, education is the health and wealth of a country. Considering this, I was dismayed to learn that standards for students might be potentially lowered. I'm not okay as a parent. And US administrators, educators, and school board members should not be as well. Standards and testing provide accountability that both teachers and students have done their part to attain expected knowledge. I'm also disappointed that no plans for analysis of students' current academic levels have been communicated. Thank you for lending me your attention. And I hope you take some points to heart and let's have a can-do attitude rather than can't, get away from the can't-do attitude and let's get to work and figure this.
Hello, my name is Vicky Muchler, and I'm a District 64 parent. First, I want to start off by thanking the school board members for their willingness to serve this community in their elected capacity. I'm sure it's a very difficult task, especially in these challenging times. We, the community, elected you all to ensure that this district provides the best possible education to the D64 students. However, I'm here to tell you, school board members, Dr. Olson, other administrators, you are failing this community and its students. In a time of crisis, when surveyed in the summer, 70% of the families wanted in-person. 30% chose remote. It was your job this summer to ensure that there was a plan for both groups of learners to receive the best quality education for their learning preference. However, in Dr. Olson's current hybrid plan, neither group of children will ever have a dedicated teacher teaching them in their preferred learning style of remote or in-person for the foreseeable future. What you are asking your teachers to do is the impossible. Teaching two groups of students in different locations on different learning levels. It is a disservice to the teachers and a disservice to the students. This is unacceptable, and the school board must demand a better hybrid plan from Dr. Olson. Dr. Olson has also not shared what metrics he would use to continue to increase the in-person learning experience for our children. What he has provided is a lackluster hybrid option that you all have assumed is, and that what you all have assumed that this option is sufficient, and it is not. We expect the school board and the administrators are scouring other area school districts that are actively providing more in-person instruction by implementing new safety protocols. I can only hope that Dr. Olson and his staff are tirelessly working on this research and engaging with their peers in other districts. We want to find out what, what's working for them. What, too, can we implement to get our children back to school? Well, I'm very happy that the district is now asking for parent-community volunteers to serve on a pandemic advisory committee. My big question is, where was this this summer? I mean, I guess better late than never. But this is mid-October, which is six months into a pandemic. We need to be more proactive than this. This is the most critical challenge that public education has ever faced. Please don't let our kids down. They need to be in school, learning from their dedicated teachers. And also, for the families that chose remote learning, they also deserve a dedicated remote teacher that can give them the instruction they also deserve. This hybrid plan is a weak Band-Aid, with teachers stretched to their breaking points, students' heads stuck to a computer, learning from Zoom while sitting in a classroom. If D64 remains in hybrid or full remote for the full 2021 school year with no changes, just imagine the educational and socio-emotional devastation that will occur to our children. Please, Dr. Olson, please, school board, don't let this happen on your watch. You need to fix this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Stojakovich. I am a parent of a fourth grade, now St. Paul of the Cross student, a seventh grade Lincoln Middle School student, and a ninth grade District 207 student. I will sound a bit like a resounding gong after my friends who have also spoken here today about their disappointment in the plan that's been put into place for the students who choose to stay at home in quarantine and the students who desperately need and require in-person learning. The voices of the 70% have not been heard at all or acknowledged. We have been pushed off for months. We've been patient. We've been waiting. And now I hit my breaking point. My son hit his breaking point. When I go into a C of C student into my portal and I see three Fs and a couple Ds, we've got a problem. He's in the basement all day doing his learning. He's got a tutor for four hours a week, working on math to get caught back up. But it's like scraping and climbing back to the top because every week you go back onto that stupid Zoom call and you tune back out and you have to try and refocus and learn and engage in an opportunity that does not work for your learning style and is not working so, for so many children and families today. We need in-person learning for these students as much as possible. The fact that a kindergartner will spend more hours in school before December than my seventh grade son seems actually preposterous to me. But I digress. The bottom line is, these core classes need to be in-person. I agree with Diane. Five days of half-day core learning would be ideal at least. I understand we are in a pandemic, but there are opportunities for students to work from home and these other children to be in their core classes. The voices of the seventh and eighth grade students are really, they're being let down. We have asked for the in-person learning for them. They're being, I mean, literally, they are the bottom of the pile right now. And it's, it's a shame and it's an embarrassment to the district. And it breaks my heart that nobody seems to be picking up the slack and helping these kids get the opportunities that they need to be in-person.
Hello. My name is Aneta Roschko, a mother of three, District 64. I'm very concerned and frustrated parent, as we are all. I'm an ICU nurse. I have been on the, at the front lines of the pandemic since the beginning. No one asked me if I was comfortable caring for others in the pandemic. I did what was necessary and what was asked of me. Now, now it's time for the school to do the same. I asked for the return to learn plan, not in classroom Zoom. That's not acceptable. All I keep hearing, we're hearing, we care about our kids and staff's safety or wellbeing. I'm asking you to do just that. Most of the kids are not thriving in the remote learning environment. They have lost enthusiasm for school. They no longer feel like they are necessary elements in their own education. They feel as they are not welcome in their own school. They feel isolated from the friends. If you come at me with the science and guidelines, I will ask you, show me the science that proves that kids are significant vector in COVID-19 transmission. I ask you, show me the science that proves that kids die at high rates of COVID-19. I ask you, show me the science that shows the social isolation, remote learning actually improve kids' lives. I will ask you to show me the research that proved that the virtual learning we currently have are effective as in-person learning. We are following the numbers and science and not emotionally charged manipulation. I don't understand why. Creeping the entire generation in the name of the saving lines would be considered a greater good. COVID-19 is terrible, but it's not going away. We need to learn to live with it and be safe around it. What better? What better form to teach our youth about appropriate behaviors than to bring them into school, teach them, and mother the expectation? I truly, if you truly love the kids and want the best of them, you need to stand together with the parents advocating for a turn of in-person instruction. Not, not in Zoom, classroom Zoom. Stop using our kids as hostages to further some political agenda. Stop patting yourself. Stop patting yourself back, "Job well done with remote learning." It does not work. It is a Band-Aid for less-than-ideal situation that causes more harm than not. Engage and join with those of us fighting for reopening schools and not Zoom schools. And our numbers are growing every day. I'm not here to upset anyone. I always felt that everyone at our school and District 64 made great partners of our kids' growth and education. I still do. But changes need to happen, and they need to happen fast. Our kids have already been deprived of over six months of normalcy. What else? In the beginning was understandable. No one knew what was going on and was happening to happen, going to happen. It's most definitely not the case anymore. We all know that despite the admirable effort put forth by teachers and staff, the remote learning is not the answer. I urge you to look around and take notice of parents who have enough. Parents are pulling the kids off schools. Well, you will lose students, you will lose funding. More importantly, you will lose the trust and the respect of our community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rennie Pedersen, and I have two children that have attended schools at D64. My daughter is currently in fifth grade, and my son is a freshman at Maine South. I have to be honest. I've never attended a school board meeting. I very rarely reached out to my kids' teachers or admin for any concerns. I've never felt a need to intervene or to be part of this conversation until now. I've been incredibly disappointed by how the school board has voted on the reopening of our schools. I'm reminded daily from talks with other teachers at different districts who have better plans on how well it's going in their district and how happy their children are at school on a daily basis. My kids have always been happy at school. I've always been so impressed with all the teachers and their learning experiences. But now I demand transparency. I demand a solid plan after November 20th with safe options for the 70% of parents who are asking for a safe in-person approach. I demand the board takes back control of this issue and represents the parents who voted them into this important role. I'm done with all the excuses. Not enough extra buses, force of custodians, not enough space, lack of funds, not safe enough. Why is every other district able to figure this out? I'm done with watching my children fall further and further behind. I'm done with hearing my daughter cry most mornings because she hates looking at a screen all day. I'm done hearing how other districts are more creative and better organized and frankly, leap years ahead of us. I'm done with hearing. I'm done with hearing how much our great teachers want to see their students. I'm hopeful you will hear our plea and make the right choices for our children. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Alexis Conway. I have two students at D64. I have a fifth-grade daughter at Roosevelt and a seventh-grade son at Lincoln. And I had something prepared, and it just, I think that it resonates with what everybody has really already said tonight. I really just kind of want to now say, what are we going to do? Dr. Olson and I have had some conversations. And, you know, I think like everybody has said, there's just a lot of excuses and not a lot of, let's try it, let's go for it, let's do it. And I think that in this community, we've shown that that's what we're made of. I think that what's been going on and why this group of parents have been so silent up until now is because we have always admired our, our administration, our school board. Our children have been supported by loving teachers, and we never doubted that you had their best interest involved in every decision that was being made. Never for a second. You know, we got the hybrid plan in August, and I think none of us were thrilled with it. But we're like, okay, this is where we're at. Let's go. And then it's like right before school starting, you know, maybe that was in August that we got the, we're going full remote. I literally in my head thought, oh my God, things are worse than what I know. Kids are dying, teachers are dying, something was really bad that I just don't know about. Okay, let's go. We're, we're going into this remote. And as I'm going through this, I'm like, wow, my kids are struggling, getting Fs. They don't get Fs usually. Just kind of sad, not happy. Little things that you just notice about your kid that you're like, this is not right. This is not who they are. And you start to see a pattern, and there's nothing else to attribute it to except just sadness. They're just sad. And as I'm going through this, I saw Fran. Where's Fran? I see Fran at Cryzer's getting our dog food, and I'm just like, oh my God. I see Fran, you know, we saw often at the store, and we talk, and our kids play sometimes. But it's like, Fran, how you doing? She's like, terrible. We're all like dying all of a sudden. And I'm like, Fran, wait, I'm dying too. Your kids aren't doing good? My kids aren't doing good. And I seem to have had the same conversations with my close friends all the time. But it wasn't till I saw Fran, who I haven't seen since before the pandemic. And I'm like, wow, she's failing. Her kids are failing. Okay, there's a lot of us. And I start talking to people, and I'm like, okay, Vicky, my neighbor, my friend, my big organizer. I'm like, we've got to do this, and I need help, and I hate putting myself out there. Please help me. So we start this Facebook group, and all of a sudden now we're at the 750 members. This was, this was not a group of bashing. The first thing I say in my About section is, this is a non-confrontational, non-political group. We are not here to debate what is right for your child versus what's right for my child. We are here to collectively have a voice that we haven't had all this time. So I think that we have shown as a community that we can come together. We are here to support our teachers, to hear Ms. Brain talk. Both of my children have Ms. Brain. She is the best first-grade teacher I think there is. To hear her speech and, and stand up and say, teachers are not okay with this. I think this is the biggest takeaway that I've had. I initially started this to say, give us more in-person learning. I still say, give us more in-person learning. But what I've learned is, we are not only being failed. It's not just the 73% of us being failed. You're failing those that want remote learning as well. You're pulling their teachers in different directions. And their kids are going to get new teachers in October. There's, there's all sorts of things that they're going to miss out on. There's, there's all sorts of things that they're going to miss out on, as well as our students, as well as now we hear very clearly our teachers. Nobody wants this plan, not the 70%, not the 30%, not the teachers. Why do you want this plan? What about this plan is going to work? I, I do not want to have, I want to work with you, I want to work with this board, I want to work with our community and I want to make education a priority for our children. They are not okay. Thank you and please let me know at any time if there's anything that I could do to help, support, love to hear any ideas and thank you.
Is there anybody else in person that would like to speak before we move to the public comments online?
Dr. Olson?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to speak, but I need to clarify a possible misunderstanding from Rick's opening statement. I'm going to step to the podium. Hello, Tom Sotos. I'm a parent of two students here at, in D64. I have a sixth grader at Emerson and a seventh grader at Emerson. I want to clarify something, I'm speaking as a parent and in a unique situation as a board member. But Rick, when Rick made a statement earlier about what I may have said at another meeting, I want to clarify that I wasn't trying to get the board to step back. I was actually trying to get the board to step forward. However, I don't want that request to be, to be interpreted as a lack of confidence in our administration or our superintendent. Having the unique situation, the unique understanding that I do and insight, I know our administration and our superintendent have worked extremely hard to try to figure out a plan. However, after seeing the outpouring today and what I've been witnessing on our emails, I feel that we as a board can help. We don't need to step in and take over, but I don't think it's fair for you or administration to have to do this alone. And if the rest of us board members can do anything, you know, I don't shy away from work. As a board member and as a parent, I'd be willing to jump in every night of the week for however many hours it's necessary. And I think the rest of the board should do the same.
Okay, so I think now we can turn to the public comments online.
Sure, Ken, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of clarifications. I am going to read these in the order that they were received. And if someone had a comment that they emailed and actually read out tonight, because we have a couple of those, I will not repeat them. First comment is from Beata DeFranco. Dear Dr. Olson and board members, may we request that a parent's survey be conducted, broken down by school, of parents who want their child to attend five days in-person school versus hybrid versus fully remote, and a reopening plan based on these results with dates of implementation and specific COVID-related metrics that would require in-person school to be moved to remote. Thank you. Our next comment is from Sarah Henley. Return to in-person learning, question mark. We have been a longtime Park Ridge residents. We have three children in the Park Ridge School District, two at Lincoln and one at Roosevelt. We truly love that this town has to offer families, what this town has to offer families, great schools, wonderful friends and a safe community to grow and learn in. When spring hit and school went remote, we were going to ride out the COVID storm with our community, knowing we were all in this together. But as time went by, it seemed that we were not. No real plans were being made for our children. It seemed like a puppet show was taking place. We thought there was some sort of return to learning in the classroom. When the district sent out the remote learning plan for fall, we made the choice to pull our kids from the only place they had called home, leaving friends, sports and activities they loved, to some of which are still running even though our schools are not. A day after District 64 made the announcement to go fully remote learning, we went to the sixth grade open house in Lake Geneva, small groups of parents and students sitting at tables six feet apart and one family per table. This was a great way for the school to lay out their plan. We were able to ask questions and learn about what this year might look like. It was a nice welcome back to school with smiles and a wave from six feet apart. In-person school is essential for many students and parents, learning styles, social skills, IEP friendships, and yes, for some, a full meal and safe place. Education is not a one-size-fits-all and we need to accept that. Let's sure children that people who, who think differently on an issue can work together and respect each other while finding a solution for all. No need to tear a family down because they need a different education model than your family. The daily running of the school is kind of the same only, only in smaller pods groups. Students do change classes throughout the day. Students are allowed to hang jackets, phone in lockers first thing in the morning. Lockers are not used in between classes. To teachers, students wear masks all day. Side note, my kids have not had any problems or concerns with wearing a mask all day. Teachers welcome students every morning with the mask on and waving. Students report directly to homeroom, no group gathering before after school. They have lunch at tables six feet apart with four kids from their pod. They're all allowed to go outside after lunch. They even have an after-school sport, cross-country. If a pod or a small group of students are exposed to COVID, they send the students home for 14 days. My son had this happen to him the second week of school. It was pretty seamless. He would log onto the Google Classroom at the time he would be in-person in class. Other students who choose to fully remote learn were online with him. The teachers did their best to have online students participate in group discussions with in-class students. To me, this is where the school was trying to meet all families' needs and it does work. Families or students that don't feel comfortable or ready for in-person classes have the option to enroll fully online learning, which we had to switch to for the 14 days. The school has tried to make it easy to switch as needed. It is hard to say what is different from years past at Lake Geneva Middle School, as we don't know any different. Some Wisconsin schools have been offering in-class, online and hybrid school for a few years. Wisconsin families have had the option to pick what is educational best for their student slash family. This is not new concept. Maybe we need to have an open mind that education will not look the same, maybe ever, and it could be a blessing that benefits all. Yes, we miss Park Ridge, friends, school and life as we knew it. We have to look forward and find solutions that work for all students and families. Our next comment is from Trey Kraut. My son hates school, but he hates remote learning more. Please find a way to get our kids back to school safely five days a week. And I will correct that, it is Leon Kraut. The next comment is from Matt Drogen, to whom it may concern. While the district and teachers have done their best to make the e-learning work as best as possible, it is failing our children. Our sons are nine and 10 years old in fourth and fifth grade. They are struggling to maintain focus while at home and I fear are not retaining the information they should be. My wife and I both work full-time and while I work from home, I cannot devote much time helping them during the day. We all realize the unprecedented nature of this global pandemic and I'm not here to criticize the tough decisions that were made, but we have more information now and the polls the district sent out have shown that the majority support in-person learning. While we cannot remove all risk, there are also risks with kids struggling at home and not interacting with other kids. We should take all the precautions that we can, but it's time to get our kids back in school. My last comment is that my wife Laura is a school teacher at Immaculate Conception in Chicago and they have been back full-time in-person from the start. They have made it work and the kids and teachers are thriving. They have had zero confirmed cases of COVID and have proven that this can work. Please get our kids back in school ASAP so they can get the education and attention they deserve sincerely. Our next comment is from Susan Farquhar. I would like to know the percentage of students staying fully remote for the district and if any school was markedly different than the others. Thank you. Our next comment is from Laura Bilbin. Carpenter's motto right now is whatever it takes and I strongly feel we need to do whatever it takes to get our kids off the screens and into the classrooms. Pediatricians recommend two hours of screen time a day. Research clearly shows that extended amounts of screen time causes vision problems, neck and shoulder pains, sleep disturbances, ADHD and other mental health disorders. Pre-teens are even more vulnerable to the impacts of screen use on their brain function and emotional well-being. As health professionals are seeing the virus weaken, I think it's time to get the kids off the screens and into the classroom. Taking precautions such as wearing masks will help keep the virus from spreading. It should be top priority to get the seventh and eighth graders in school for longer than two days, than two half-days, I'm sorry. I understand that the district is concerned about liability, but who is going to take responsibility for all the other effects that e-learning will cause on our children? Our next comment is from Kelly Lawrence. Greetings. I am happy District 64 has finally acknowledged the huge need for in-person learning for our community. While the plan is not perfect, I am encouraged that the needs of our students is finally being addressed. I am asking Dr. Olson and the board to please use the time remaining in this trimester to amend our current hybrid plan. The current plan is not created in a way that sets our teachers and students up for success. I would also like Dr. Olson to answer if he is considering lowering district standards. Lastly, I would like to advocate for an AM/PM schedule for our first through fifth graders. This plan has been successful in many districts throughout Illinois. I would like to know if it is being considered for District 64. If it is not, I would like to know why not. Thank you for your continued service to our community. Our next comment is from Nicole Amcona. Hello to all, thank you for everyone's hard work. What is the plan for in-person slash remote after this trimester? Has the district considered doing five in-person half-days? This way the students can have their core classes in-person. If this has not been talked about, why not? Our next comment is from Amy Taku. Members of the board, good evening. My name is Amy Taku, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. I have a seventh grade daughter and a sixth grade son who are students at Lincoln Middle School. I would like to share one of my concerns about the hybrid plan with our board and our community. I understand that grouping students is necessary for contract tracing purposes. However, the fundamental flaw with the soon-to-be implemented hybrid program at the middle school level is that grouping students together for all core classes by math level is the equivalent of tracking. Tracking is separating students by academic ability. The district's hybrid plan groups lower-level learners together for all of their core classes. My daughter is a lower-level math learner. Historically, she has been very successful in her other core classes because she is motivated by high-functioning learners, dynamic, interesting conversation, peers who are engaged leaders and exposure to new ideas. I am very concerned that the present plan, which keeps lower-level learners together for all core subjects, effectively eliminates my daughter's access to enriched curricula and a growth mindset. Thank you. Our next comment is from Stacy Janik. Elected team, I am a widow with two young children at Roosevelt and found this today. It breaks my heart. We are doing the best we can with what we're given these past two years with the loss of husband who served in public office and now the pandemic. I applaud you for your time and dedication to our community. I know it's long hours and lots of work that often goes unappreciated. I understand there's a meeting this evening, but I cannot attend, so please read this in my place. I found this drawing today in my basement from my second grader. Not only does he feel the Zoom exhaustion each day, but he has lost his lust for learning. This isn't a slam towards the teachers or staff, but rather a result of the environment. I urge you to speak on our behalf to push the administration for a better plan. We elected you to do so. Our children, our future deserve better than the current plan in place. The temp plan is in place through November and frankly, I'm happy so there's room to change it. We simply can't wait for a vaccine, which isn't being tested currently on children and not expected till fall of 2021. This isn't a blanket approach either. Our positivity rates in Park Ridge are much lower than the country and state averages and we should be looking at other successful areas, including surrounding districts and private schools. Let's not reinvent the wheel, but come up with a solution that is best for our children. Listen to them, listen to my son, a picture says a thousand words. Thanks. And I think you all got the picture. Our next comment is from Kristin Olson. Since District 64's greatest challenge to providing in-school instruction while maintaining the IDPH orders seems to be the lack of space, I see three possible solutions. Alternate schedules, utilizing non-district-owned buildings, outdoor classrooms, lunch areas, et cetera. Are parents willing to consider school on alternative schedules such as an early AM, afternoon, weekends and/or evenings? I hate the idea of losing summer break, but it would provide time for additional instruction. It immediately increases our facility space while still allowing time to clean between groups. Can we utilize other facilities such as park district buildings for class setting or rent private buildings? During the Washington School Space Crunch discussions, I recall a parent's pushback on using expensive temporary trailers, especially security concerns. So I hesitate to suggest outdoor tented heated space on school grounds, but it gives us more space for in-person instruction with access to bathrooms, buses, meals, maybe outdoor heated lunchrooms. All of those options create logistic challenges for parents, transportation potential for students at different schools or different schedules. I'm not knowledgeable enough on District 64 operations to understand the feasibility of those options. I don't know how it would impact teachers, parents or other staffers. District 64 is addressing increased enrollment and aging buildings. We need to find space for full-time kindergarten. I'd like whatever facility solutions we consider and money spent on buildings to serve as long-term improvements rather than reactive stopgaps. Thank you. Our next comment is from Matt Glasky. I need some clarification here. Multiple stories, comments, et cetera are floating around on social media and around town. Please clarify for the record the following. One, for the proposed hybrid plan, are the teachers supposed to teach both in-person and virtual kids at the same time? Two, around 90% of the teachers do not want to go back live in-person instruction, is this true? Is it because the teachers did not have a say in how this hybrid plan was formed? Three, I heard that Dr. Olson stated that we will only go to five-day in-person learning when we have a vaccine and the governor moves us to phase five. Did he say this? What state entity is mandating that both of these occur before we resume five-day in-person instruction? The hybrid plan, as I understand it, does not seem like it will work because what comes across the Chromebook will look radically different in-person and vice versa. This looks like a plan that is destined to fail, that will most likely force the kids back into a five-day e-learning schedule. If the teachers did not have a say in the formation of this plan, then I don't blame them for not wanting to come back. If they just don't want to return to classroom for any of the reason, any other reason, then the administration and the District 64 Board need to make it clear to the union that 73% of the parents want their kids back in school five days a week and they need to accommodate that request. Staying home is not an option. How are the Catholic and other private schools all open? How are the Catholic and other private schools all open with in-person learning? I'm sure that some of them have the same space constraints that District 64 has, yet they are making it work. A friend of mine has his kids in District 709 in downstate Morton. Morton has been open with five days in-person instruction since day one. I can only assume that District 709 has to abide by the same Illinois rules that District 64 does, so where is our five-day in-person plan? Finally, for the board. You folks have sat on your hands this entire time, and to the best of my knowledge and most of the District 64 parents I have talked to, not weighed in on any of Dr. Olson's plans in either direction. You have given him carte blanche to formulate a hybrid plan in the summer, pull it off the table a few weeks later, then reintroduce another form of it in the last couple of weeks. You were elected by us to represent the tax-paying parents, the 73% of tax-paying parents who want their kids in these schools full-time. We hired you, you hired Dr. Olson. If he is not capable or not willing to put the plan in place that the vast majority of parents want, then you need to make him do so. If you folks are not up to the task of doing so, then please step down or step aside. Is this year's e-learning better than it was last spring? Of course it is. However, e-learning does not take the place of in-person instruction, not to mention social and emotional development that is not taking place at home. You are cheating these kids out of experiences that cannot be replaced. Open the schools now. Our next comment is from Don Perick. I support your slow and safe approach to trying to get our students some in-person school time. I appreciate that you are keeping safety as our top priority. I appreciate that you started full-remote and didn't use our kids as guinea pigs in this humane experiment by rushing our kids back to in-person school like some other districts and private schools did. We have tried six weeks of full-remote, which has gone extremely well for my eighth-grader at Emerson. I would like to see the hybrid plan tried for six weeks and see how well that can go. It's really hard to say something won't work without trying it. From a middle-school perspective, I like that seventh and eighth graders are not eating lunch at school. I like that the kids are remaining in their base classrooms for the majority of kids and not having to deal with tons of kids packed in hallways during passing period. I like that you are phasing in just sixth grade first, then adding in seventh and eighth graders for part days. I like that middle-school kids are remaining with their current teachers and think this is very important to maintain for the full school year. Your approach feels safe and gives me the confidence that our schools will be able to remain open and not have to have shutdowns like other schools, as that seems like a much more disruptive event. Hopefully, all will go smoothly, and we can look towards the next step where you will continue to keep safety as the top priority, not eat lunch in schools, and continue to let middle-schools kids stay with their current teachers. Our next comment is from Elizabeth Juris. Thank you, Dr. Olson and District 64 Board, for recognizing that our community is meeting the metrics set in place by experts supporting a return to in-person school. I'm sorry. Thank you, teachers and administrators, for all of the work you have put into remote learning for our children and your continued support for our children as we shift into hybrid. Remote learning is a struggle for us, and it is heartbreaking to witness the struggles our children face day after day. As a family who has seriously considered a private school option for our children, our confidence in our amazing teachers and administrators have been what has kept us in District 64. As we shift away from the debate of if schools should open to how schools should open, we need to focus on the best way to safely accomplish this safely for students and staff. Scientists and doctors acknowledge the critical role in-person schools play in our community. Infectious disease pediatric physicians from Duke, Sally Permar, Ibukun Akinboyo, and Sarah Armstrong say it better than me. Schools should be one of the first parts of society to open, not the last. While several area schools' districts have brought their students back to five days, five full days or four full-day schedules, others are implementing a hybrid approach with a focus on phasing in more in-person learning. As you are aware, District 34 Glenview started with remote plus with designated in-person or remote teachers with a plan to shift to hybrid Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday full days. Less than two weeks prior to their hybrid implementation, they shifted to an AM/PM four-day model. Has District 64 considered why District 34 went this direction? I heard Dr. Olson talk about why this wouldn't work this evening, but District 34 and others are showing it does, and I have a lot more details I'm happy to share regarding overcoming the challenges he laid out. I'd like to hear input from teachers on this model or any other model they feel would be the best plan for a district. Furthermore, the two-half-day model for seventh and eighth graders cannot be the best model for students. I've researched many school reopening plans, but haven't found any districts with this model. Most frustrating of all is I haven't seen any plan on how District 64 plans to phase in more learning particularly for seventh and eighth graders. My seventh grader told me today and showed me on her Chromebook that her hybrid homeroom has only seven in-person students for Monday, Tuesday, and six in-person students Thursday, Friday. Surely, we can do more. We needed, back in the summer, a long-range plan that included the ability to shift among remote, hybrid, and full-in-person options as community metrics allow for. I'm also disappointed that my several offers to volunteer in-person in our schools have gone ignored. I live across the street from Mary Seed of Wisdom School, and every day, my remote learning children see and hear kids at school and asking me, "Why can't that be us?" We tell our children, "We can do hard things. Let's show them it's possible. Let's show them they deserve it. Let's show them the community has not forgotten them." And our next comment is from Katie Prezess. Greetings, board and administration members. I am a parent of a new kindergarten at Washington School, and I also have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. There are lots of things that aren't ideal about the school year. My little girl missed out on starting elementary school like normal due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have had many hard days, tears, tantrums, emotional breakdowns, both hers and mine. So I understand the parents that are passionate about returning to in-person learning. But COVID-19 is real. It has killed more than 210,000 Americans and has infected more than 7.5 million of us in six months. Just today, Illinois reported more than 3,000 new cases of COVID-19, the highest reported single-day increase since May. As such, we've made the choice to remain virtual. We simply can wrap our minds around the logistics of the exposure our childhood experience each day in school, the inevitable outbreaks that will occur, and the switch back to virtual learning as a result of required quarantines. For example, when a specials teacher who travels between classrooms exposed to a high number of students turns up positive for COVID, how can in-person learning continue without a quarantine of nearly the entire school? If our students, while hybrids, still have to be on a screen for the entire school experience in person and can't have close-up interaction with other students or staff, why risk exposure to COVID at all? As symptomatic or pre-symptomatic carriers of COVID-19 can come to school for days while infected and contagious, potentially infecting many others in the building, endangering our students, teachers, staff, families, extended families, and community members. What if one of those students sits in a class with my daughter? What if we then visit with her grandfather, who suffers from severe COPD and lives on supplemental oxygen? What if we want to visit my new nephew, who is three months old and doesn't yet have a fully-developed immune system? Should we isolate from family for the duration of in-person learning to minimize the risk to our families? Despite my sincere desire for a return to normal, that isn't it. I don't know what the solution is, but the failure of our federal government to control the outbreak of COVID-19 in our country is not the fault of our school board or district administration. We shouldn't be asking them to fix a problem that should have been fixed months ago at a national level. I believe many improvements can be made to the virtual learning plan currently being utilized by District 64, but until this pandemic is under control, a return to fully in-person learning is simply not feasible. Instead of asking schools and teachers to adapt to living with the virus and fix these problems, we should be asking our elected officials and business leaders to adapt to the needs of parents and families around our community and around the country. Thank you. Last in, Thomas Fisher. Good evening. My name is Tom Fisher, and I have a student at Washington School, and I also have one student that is outplaced by the district. I am very disappointed that the board is questioning the district attorneys what they don't have to do instead of asking what we can do. Then take this information to lead and work with all they are allowed to do to develop plans, research, and provide metrics to implement what the majority of parents are looking for, a set of plans to meet the needs of both in-classroom and remote learning. Thank you. And that concludes the public comments received.
Thank you, Natasha.
Dr. Olson, is there anyone else new that has come in?
No, everyone is left.
Everyone is left, okay. All right, well, then I think we will move on to the next agenda item on the agenda tonight, which is the approval of the agenda itself. Is there any board member that has any additions, deletions, or amendments to the agenda as presented tonight? Okay. Then we are going on to a happy part of the agenda tonight, the School Principals Appreciation Month. Dr. Olson?
Yes. Dear members of the District 64 Board, while the strength of our teaching staff is known throughout the district, I would like tonight to recognize our building leaders as well. As October is Principal Appreciation Month, the week of October 19 through the 23rd is Principal Appreciation Week, and Friday, October 23rd is Principal Appreciation Day. They definitely wanted to make sure they had it covered. So, I've been continually impressed by our strong building leaders throughout the past year and a half. Serving as a principal truly puts one at the heart of everything. They are where the convergence of staff, parents, students, and the district office typically resides, and they need to wear many hats when guiding each of these groups forward. I have come to appreciate their professionalism, their focus on students, the care they have for their staffs, and their dedication to continually improving our schools for the benefit of all. And if that were not enough in a normal year, COVID-19 has certainly changed the landscape of what being a building leader means. They have been primarily working seven-day weeks since the middle of the summer. They're here early and have stayed late into the evening. Sometimes, I've just had to check that they were wearing different clothes each day, so I at least know that they went home at some point. They care deeply for the well-being of students and staff, and they have persevered through all of the challenges the virus has dealt us so far. They have been invaluable throughout the development of our plans, and they continue to answer questions from parents and staff as we move through each step. So for this year, above all other years, I thank them for their incredible service to the district during these difficult times. We are all truly appreciative to have them as members of the District 64 team. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Olson. I couldn't say it any better than you did. I think you referenced the principals as building leaders, and I think, since I tend to think in more business terms all the time, I think of them as a bunch of CEOs we have running around here, because they really are. They're running, you know, they're running a big operation in each one of those buildings, and they've got a bunch of customers, between 500 or 600-plus kids and, you know, twice that number of parents. And they do an amazing job, and I wanted to say on behalf of the board how proud we are of them, proud we are of the team that you've put together in our building principals, and we couldn't be happier.
Can we, can we unmute and give them applause?
Yes, they're all attending. A lot of them are actually attending, so, thank you.
Thank you for recognizing them tonight, Dr. Olson. Okay, we're going to move on now to the next agenda item, which is the review of the proposed tax levy and the resolution that we have. So, Luanne, do you want to lead us through that?
Thanks, Rick. So, tonight, this is one of the most important parts of my job, which is the tax levy. Tonight, we're going to be looking at three important actions. One is approve the resolution for the 2020 tax levy estimate. We're going to establish the date and time for the truth and taxation hearing and publish the notice of the truth and taxation hearing. As you all know, District 64 is tax-capped. We fall under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, otherwise known as PTEL. It was enacted in Cook County in 1995. PTEL limits the increase in property tax extension to 5% or the increase in this Consumer Price Index, All Urban Consumers, otherwise known as CPIU, whichever is less. The CPIU for December 2019 was 2.3%, and that will be used in the 2020 tax levy. Per Illinois State Statute, school boards must adopt an estimated tax levy not less than 20 days prior to the date it adopts its final levy. So our key dates that we're looking at are today, October 10th, the board adopts the tentative tax levy, and we're establishing our date and time of our public hearing. On November 12th, as we have done in years past, we will have our public hearing on the tax levy. Then at the December 10th meeting, the board will adopt our final 2020 tax levy. The tax levy is then filed with the Cook County Clerk prior to the last Tuesday in December. The hearing is called a truth and taxation hearing, and that is if our tax levy exceeds the previous year's operating fund extension by more than 5%, we must have the truth and taxation hearing, and we must publish notice of this. Even though our increase in our tax levy, our proposed one, does not exceed the 5% and has not in many years, we still, as a board and as a district, believe in transparency and holding this truth and taxation hearing every year. In the packet tonight, there was a chart that shows the requested and actual levy increases that we have seen now over the last 11 years. As you can see, last year in 20, in, I don't know, my 2019 with me, but in 2020, we have the 2.3% CPI, and we're asking for 3.93%. What we'll receive is still unknown at this time. I'm sorry. Actually, I don't have the chart in my.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got it, Eric. Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. In 2019, the CPIUs for the PTEL was 1.9%, and the board-approved levy request last year was 4.8%, 8.7%. Our actual levy increase was 2.71% when we received it from Cook County in June of this year. So as you can see, the difference between the 2.71% and the 1.9% was new construction in the district. Why do we increase the tax levy greater than the CPIU? This district increases the levy request to capture all new construction dollars that are not under the tax cap the first year they're on the tax rolls. The district will still only receive the amount of dollars allowed under the tax cap for existing EAV property tax pool. So for our taxpayers within District 64, the portion of the levy request borne by them, 3.93% is the total levy request, and 1.63% of that is a direct result of addition of projected new property EAV. This does not, and I want to stress, does not contribute any additional tax increase to the current taxpayers that comprise the base EAV property pool. 2.30% is the existing EAV property pool, and it will only 2.30% is the existing EAV property pool, and it will only increase a maximum of 2.3% per PTEL law. What happens if we set our levy too low? The money from the new construction is lost money, and it's foregone in the first year, and that will compound significantly in every future year. We could never catch up with each annual increase as limited to PTEL, so we couldn't decide next year that we would levy more to try and make up the difference. Each year's, as you know, limiting rate formula under PTEL begins with the prior year's actual tax extension. The critical funds rightfully owed to the district can never be accessed again. Our financial projections assume, as directed by the board, that revenues will grow each year at the full amount legally available to the district. We keep expenditures in line with CPIU growth, hoping, as I've always said, we don't want to go to referendum, we need to live within our means. So just to remind everybody, the factors in our tax levy are CPIU, 2.3%, that is known. Our EAV is unknown. We won't know that until we receive the final tax levy next June. Our new construction is also unknown at this time. This is why we want, are asking the board to approve a tax levy increase right now that is higher than we know we actually will receive, because we want to make sure we capture any new construction dollars. Any questions?
Well, why don't we, Luanne, why don't we do a motion on it, and then we can do questions if you're all right with that, after we've made a motion?
And then, after, do you want to do that, and then we'll talk about abating the tax, the debt service levy? Okay, go ahead.
Yep, perfect.
Are you going first, or you want me to continue?
No, 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 I was going to have someone make a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hoping for a motion.
Pregnant pause, I forgot.
Exactly.
I'll take it, Rick. Excellent. 20-10-1, I moved that the Board of Education of a Community Consolidated School District Number 64 approved the 2020 tax levy estimate, establishment of the date and time of the truth and taxation hearing for November 12, 2020, at 6:45 PM, and publication of notice of truth and taxation hearing.
Thanks, Fred. Is there a second? Denise, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So why don't we start with questions, and then, Luanne, maybe we can jump into the abatement issue as well, too? So any questions initially from anybody on the board with Luanne's presentation? I know, I know the board has been through this presentation several times for, we still have 100 people attending the meeting right now, it was close to 300 earlier, but this is kind of a difficult and sometimes dry subject, but it's a difficult one to understand, and so I thought you did a good job, Luanne, tonight of walking everyone through that again. So, any, any other questions from the board before we talk about the abatement issue specifically? We're not going to vote just yet, we want to talk about that, and then... Okay, then, Luanne, you want to touch on the abatement issue?
So I also want to let you know that I did check with Hodges and Louisey in terms of our truth and taxation notice, and we did not, we did not need to change it to have, if that meeting ends up being virtually, like, fully virtual next month. So according to Steve Rickett, because we're not even required to have this hearing, we're not going over the 5%, nobody could come back and challenge our tax levy. So I wanted to make sure that we were okay with that, just like we did with our budget.
Great.
Okay, so, next year, the 2014 bonds that were issued for the field work will be paid off. This January, we're making a payment of approximately $2.1 million. Our final payment next year is $350,000 and some change. I had Elizabeth Hennessy, who many of you have met, at Raymond James calculate the savings, and we used a $400,000 home. And if we were to abate the debt service levy for 2020, it would save each home approximately $72. I realize it's not a lot of money, but it is a savings. And this will be the final payment on your outstanding bonds in the district. The only remaining debt service will be the debt certificates that are paid out of the Operations and Maintenance Fund and out of the Operation and Maintenance Tax Levy. We have until February 28, 2021, to approve the abatement resolution. So you might ask, where are we getting the money from? So in our debt service fund, as many of you know, up until the last few years, there was a 5% loss and cost factor added on every year by Cook County. That is done to cover anyone that potentially doesn't pay their taxes, because we want to make sure, if nothing else, we can make the bond payments that we need to make to the bondholders. It is also interest that has accumulated in the fund. I talked to our auditor late last week, and they would also like for us to look beyond this at potentially removing that money from the debt service fund legally, I mean, obviously legally. So I'm going to be working with them to determine how much of that is interest and how much is lost in cost, and then we'll be working with Chapman and Cutler, who does our, is our bond attorney, they do our bonds, to see what options we have. And at that time, Eric and I will bring those options back to the board to discuss if you want to entertain any of those options as far as removing the money. So currently, we have, I believe we'll have about $2 million left in the bond fund once we make the payment, so doing the $350,000 abatement is certainly, you know, well within our means to be able to do. Typically, I don't recommend an abatement when we're in the middle of paying bonds, because if something should happen, and we have that money in the debt service fund, and we need to be able to make the payment, we have the funds available. Cook County about, well, it's probably about 11 years ago now, many of you may remember, was very late in issuing the tax bills. It wasn't until December. Many districts at that time were kind of shaken in their boots if they were going to be able to make their December 1 bond payments. So having that money in the debt service fund serves us well, you know, when we have outstanding bonds, in case that would ever occur. So there is a resolution that I would be bringing to the board next month for you to look at and consider, and then we have until February 28th, but if the board is comfortable, we could bring it back in December for the board to approve the resolution at that time. And then that will be sent to Cook County in time so that that debt service levy would not be on the tax bills. Questions?
So, Luanne, just one quick thing on the abatement. I know, I think it was the last meeting or maybe meeting before, we talked about the idea of, you know, if we had surplus as a result of COVID, and maybe we would abate some of that money, and we talked just about that whole issue of the state law, if we were to abate in a situation like that, that the state law then would preclude us from capturing that new growth, right?
That is correct.
Right, but what you're talking about right now is not the same thing, because this is debt service that we're talking about, right?
Correct, and the debt, the debt service levy is set every year by the Cook County Clerk.
Right.
So it has really nothing to do with our EAV. It has to do, all of it has to do with any outstanding bonds that the district has at the time.
So I guess, I mean, my, the obvious question is, in light of hearing that the previous two hours of our meeting, you know, there were several people who referenced the cost issue to the district, and Dr. Olson did at the beginning of this meeting, you know, that there are, in order to do some of these things, we are going to have extra costs, and I know, you know, later on in the meeting tonight, we're going to be talking about some things related to headcount that are going to increase costs in the district. So I guess I would just, I know we're not deciding that tonight, Luanne, but it's something that I think the board needs to consider of, even though under normal circumstances we would abate, we, you know, we're going to be looking, I assume, at a budget increase here as a result of COVID that we need to plan for as well.
Right, we did put a certain amount of money into the budget for PPE, about $200,000, and then we received the CARES Act money, if you remember, in the spring that was used to purchase second-grade Chromebooks, but as Eric indicated, there are a lot of additional costs, I mean, a lot. And we will be starting up our transportation for our families, and we can only have 23 children on a bus, which is one per seat, and we're staggering them in the seats, so all the seats are marked. So as we continue to have more children return to in-person learning, if we cannot put the children next to each other, that cost is certainly going to climb very quickly.
So, okay, so just let me understand one thing. I'm sorry to everybody to be monopolizing this, I'm just trying to wrap my own head around this right now. So if, if we don't abate that money we're talking about right now, can that money be used for stuff like PPE? And that's what I thought, right? Debt service money?
Well, not right now, not until we would get done with our examination of what is interest and what is lost in cost. The interest amounts are not that difficult to be moved through resolution.
Right.
However, the loss in cost, because that's money that was taxed to the taxpayers, that money may need to remain in the fund, so we need to look at the separation of how much is of each in there. And then I would recommend that the board move the interest that we're able to move at that time and look at options for the remaining funds that are in there.
Okay, so, and again, sorry, last question, I promise I'll shut up, board.
That's okay.
But, so then, if we, if we were stuck having to leave some or all of that money in the debt service fund, we could, we could use it, if we had not abated, then we could use it for other debt service, is that correct?
Well, yeah, I don't know that we can use it for the debt service, I mean, debt certificate payments, which would be an interesting question that come out of the O&M fund, but if the board decided to issue, issue bonds for, you know...
New stuff.
New stuff.
Right.
Then these, this money can be used, sometimes they may issue a small bond to do something, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways they look at the financing, but certainly if it's not moved this year, I would highly recommend that when the board does issue bonds, that they incorporate those funds into that.
Okay, so I assume you're going to be bringing to the board just a kind of big picture at some point, once we're talking capital projects and potentially new bond issuances, how that money would all fit in, okay? But that's not for tonight?
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right, I'm done now, I promise.
That's okay.
Anyone else that want to talk through the levy? Any questions? All right, we have a motion on the table, so Natasha, I'll turn to you. Are there any comments on the levy?
Surprisingly, no.
Okay. And, Dr. Olson, still nobody in the room?
Correct.
Okey-doke, then, I assume that means no one has comments in the room. All right, then if there's nothing else from the board, I think we'll take a roll call vote on this.
Sotos?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Biagi?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Salas, yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the updates and discussion of the summer 2020 construction projects.
Hey, Rick, I'm going to just tee this up and then turn it over to Rick Patrisic and Rhonda George, and we should give Rick a little award, he stayed on through everything, he didn't abandon us. So last October, we gave the board an update on the construction, and I put together, you know, a pretty concise list of the major projects that have been accomplished since, well, basically since Ron and I came to the district in July of 2015. The first year was spent digesting the master facility plan that many of you may remember, I know Tom Soto's definitely does, that was done by FGM Architects, and developing projects for that summer 2016. That was a, you know, a time when we were looking at secure vestibules and all kinds of different things in the district, and our tagline became "safe, warm, and dry," when we, you know, realized the state of the roofs in the district, the tuck pointing, and not having secure entrances into our facilities. Summer 2020 marked the fifth and final year of our current master facility plan. As a district, we've accomplished our promise to keep our schools safe, warm, and dry, along with a lot of other projects that needed to be completed in our buildings, including our most recent addition to Washington School during the summer of 2020. Another thing that the board had charged us with was maintaining our most, the most valuable assets, although I always think of our students as staff as the most valuable assets, but in terms of, you know, the buildings are incredibly valuable. So as with your home, the school buildings do require constant maintenance and at times major renovations. Our administration uses SchoolDude, which is a computerized maintenance management system. This is used to schedule all maintenance from minor maintenance projects to our preventative maintenance program that we have in the district. Our maintenance department and head custodians use this program on a daily basis to look, so if a teacher has an issue, they submit it through SchoolDude. This is, this helps if someone's not walking down the hall and saying, hey, I have this issue, and, you know, if they're like me, I forget like the minute I turn around. This is, the SchoolDude setup has allowed our administration to set up a system that was requested by the board back in 2015 to make sure that we are properly maintaining our equipment to achieve the longest useful life. Some of the higher-level ones that were not in place, that we have put in place, is preventative maintenance on all heating, ventilating, and cooling systems in the district. Ron can certainly chime in, but this is done in the fall and in the spring, so prior to the startup of each season. We do semi-annual roof inspections, and minor repairs are done on all of our district facilities to maintain the integrity of the roofing systems. Tuck pointing is evaluated every summer, with minor tuck pointing occurring throughout the district. Just like your home, if you have a brick home or a brick chimney, you know that you have to do tuck pointing to maintain the integrity. Major tuck pointing projects, as we've seen in the past, are included when we do other projects within a building. Parking lots are on a program now for seal coating and striping to extend the life of our parking lots. Our annual boiler inspections and maintenance are done prior, as I said, to heating season and to meet our insurance requirements with our boilers. As the district looks forward, administration has been working with Studio GC to develop the roadmap for the next set of construction projects. This information will be shared with the board next year, so in 2021. It will include not only information on needed work, but will also contain valuable information on future replacement dates for items. So those roofs that we replaced five years ago, well, 20 years from now, they're probably going to need to be replaced again. So this will allow the board to also financially plan for those products, projects. So if you know you have $5 million in roofing coming up, then you know you're going to need the funds either within your operating funds, or in your capital projects funds, or you would need to issue bonds so that you can continue to maintain the facilities. So the list I added on for 2020, this gives you a high-level look at what the district has accomplished. I had talked with Eric about this, and I just like this because it kind of keeps a running total. Every year, the taxpayers and community members and the board can see the work that we're doing on, you know, high-level projects. So this summer, we did our Washington addition, the flooring, we had to do asbestos abatement. Of course, we have architect and construction fees on that facility. So our total construction costs are just over $34 million for the last five years, and during that time, we only issued the debt certificates that were used, I believe in the summer of 2017, after the teachers, after our contracts were settled, and we wanted to show our staff that we were using the funds on our building, that we were not increasing our savings accounts based on our teacher, on the negotiation of our contracts. The other thing that the board should be very proud is that they did not issue bonds. We have gone and taken working cash twice since I've been here in $10 million tranches. We've also taken $4 million from our Operations and Maintenance Fund and $2 million from our Ed Fund. So of all the work that we've done on these major projects, we did not issue nor increase the taxpayers' tax bill. So I think that's something the board should really be proud of. I'm going to turn it over now to Rick and Ron, and they can bring you kind of up-to-date on Washington construction and what's going on. Rick?
Okay, good evening. Just to give you a quick...
Okay, good evening. Just to give you a quick description of where we're at, the existing Washington building has been completed as far as the renovation work. There's minor things that will be worked on, starting on Monday as school will be closed. Contractors will be in doing punch list items. The addition is at a state where all spaces can be used. All the renovated toilet facilities in the building that were done have been completed. We added during the course of the project touchless faucets in those facilities, both in the addition and the remodeled restroom facility. So that was something that is very helpful in the situation that we're in for health matters. Currently, we are now about 50%, maybe a little more, on our site utility work, which has been difficult at times because when we've uncovered certain things, especially when we had to open the street and look at things that we were turning off, like an old water main, and found out that the existing water main, that was the larger size that we were using for the building supply for the majority of the building. The, the shut-off valve was no longer operable in the street, so we had to make repairs on that. So that pushed us back just a day or two, but we were able to handle it right away and do it properly so that the district has, you know, a good water service to that building. The remaining work for both the water and sanitary services to the building have been completed at this point. So there's a couple of things just to clean up on that, but all the services for those two items are up and running as they should be. We're moving very rapidly with the stormwater work that we have to complete per the city codes of Park Ridge and also the MWRD. We're roughly about 50% complete on stormwater renovation work. And we will be quickly moving into the installation of the detention equipment that will be buried underground and connected to the, the new pipes that we've been installing. So that's, that's moving very rapidly. And the city has been very active with us in our inspections and everything. The timetable for the completion of that stormwater management work and also the restoration of the site is on schedule at this point. We're hoping to continue to have good weather. We feel that the majority of the work will be done by the end of October and restoration will start at the end of October also with completion of it, probably looking by the end of the first week in November. So that's, that's going very well at this point. They've made a lot of progress even in the last week and a half on that work. So the restoration work will be the site paving, both some concrete work and the majority of it is asphalt paving. The, once that is completed, the restoration of the grass areas and the planting of the trees will be accomplished at the same time. So all in all, right now, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I know it's been a long, tough year in getting things moving forward because of the pandemic. And we were able to weather the storm of delays on equipment that was purchased during the course of the construction of the addition and renovation work. And I think the contractors did a good job of getting the existing building back together for staff to come back into. And then as we kind of had a week and a half, two-week turnover on the addition, that was handled very well by staff, even though we had some tight timeframes on getting people in and out, contractors in and out, and then the staff moving into those areas of the addition. So that's about it right now. Ron, do you have anything you wanna add?
Maybe, do you wanna go into a little bit on some of the, the extra sanitary lines and the lift station and some of the delays caused by finding out some of that information?
Sure, sure. The sanitary service out of the addition and also the north part of the existing building that handles the renovated restrooms. When we went to make our connection out into the street, there was, we knew that there were fiber optic lines out in the parkway area, but those three lines were encased in concrete, which caused us to change how we had to get the sanitary sewer out to the street. We ended up having to put a forced main in where it's run by pumps that are located kind of at the northeast corner outside of the building. That, that sewer line is connected by a smaller pipe going out to the street. And the pumps are used to push the sanitary sewer material out to the city sewer itself because of the elevation that the fiber optic lines were all at. We couldn't use the piping that we initially had planned for. That all had to be reviewed and approved by both the city and MWRD. That probably cost us two to three weeks in getting that tied in. And as I mentioned, when we did the switch over of, you had two water services to the building previously from past additions. When we took out the old three-inch line, it was in the documents for us to disconnect that line out in the street. And we were fortunate enough to really find the valve that handled the larger water service that feeds the building also. The valve for that was right next to the smaller valve. But at that particular time, as I mentioned, we found out that that valve in the street was not working properly. And so we replaced that also at an additional cost. But there's also a manhole out there now that there was no access to it when we first opened the street. So it's, the building is in much better shape as far as being protected for any water breaks on that water supply line to the building and also the sewer modifications that we made at the north end of the building. As we had said to you previously, when we got into that, we found out that the existing line initially had large tree roots growing through it. And that forced us to spend some money at that point to rerun that line. But then we had to end up putting the lift station in so that handled all the sewer services out at the north end of the building.
And all of that, each step that we find something different?
Absolutely.
Causes a delay because then we need to resubmit to the city and to MWRD. And it's a snowball effect of, you know, everybody says, well, what takes so long? Well, you can't get MWRD and the city to move as quick as we would like them to sometimes.
Right. But in certain instances, they were very understanding, being field changes. So I thought they reacted as quickly as they could because they needed to make sure that things were being done appropriately. We had site meetings out on site with both our engineers and the city engineer and the MWRD engineers to move the issues along as quickly as possible. They always wanted documents before they would approve the revisions, but we, we met so that we made sure that we were doing it one time and everybody was in agreement while we were out there.
I think all in all, for some of the, the problems we ran into, I think we kept a pretty good timetable, all in all.
Well, and if there was any year to have these problems, this would, this would be the year to have those problems.
Yes.
We lucked out in that sense, so.
Yes.
It did work to our advantage on that a little bit.
Right, right.
And the staff really has been very understanding in some of our delays of getting them into certain spaces. They, they, they got it. And we, we kept working as quickly as possible to get things turned over to everybody. But, you know, it's, it's all, once you see the building again, when you're able to have an opportunity to come and take a walk through, I think you'll see some really good things in that building at this time.
You're gonna be impressed with it.
Yeah, we're excited to get in there and see it. Well, any questions from the board for either Luanne on her presentation or for Rick and Ron?
I just had a question for Rick and Ron. Given that we're in our last year of our master facility plan, I was just curious, do we have any outstanding concerns over the remaining HVAC zone at Carpenter? Or is that pretty much well taken care of now?
No, there's still the one zone at Carpenter that is still causing quite a bit of grief. In fact, I let Luanne know last week that we had to refill the Freon again in that zone. We've been checking it three, two to three months. And we've been adding more Freon each time. We looked for some more leaks. We found a few small ones, but there, there's still some major leaks in that system that we just can't locate or get to that are buried up in corners of the attic and under insulation and everything. So I had told Luanne that I think we really need to consider moving forward with that, if possible, this coming summer.
Okay.
Because you don't wanna end up in a situation that you lose that in the middle of the year because you've got too much of that building that, that you're not gonna be able to, to heat or cool.
Right, I just remember that winter with all the freezing pipes and,
Right.
folks out, all they break. Okay, well, it sounds like the board.
We're able to maintain it and keep it, you know, and baby it along. But if that system goes, parts aren't, aren't so readily available for, for those cassettes. Nobody really wants to work on it anymore. We've got, you know, General Mechanical is, is very well-trained on it. And they're, they're one of the few people that, that even wanna work with that system anymore. But they'd, they'd be thankful if we got rid of it because it's a headache to them, too.
Another question. We had a, I think a couple incidents of trespassing or vandalism this summer. Just curious, you know, do we have a plan? Or have we thought about what we're gonna do to, you know, beef up our, you know, security? Whether it be, you know, improved LED lighting outside, additional cameras, that sort of thing?
Well, most, most of our lighting outside has been changed over to higher efficiency LED and also a higher level of illumination out there. We have to be careful because there are codes with the city, how much we can have. And, you know, how much glare you get back from it when you're looking at it. They've got the night sky codes and all kinds of things that we have to abide by. We have been looking at adding more cameras out there, but at the same time, Garmin and I have been looking at upgrading our camera system because it's kind of an antiquated system that is not very user-friendly. So before we spend a lot more money on adding to it, Garmin and I have been looking at trying to change how the front end of it works and if we can utilize the existing equipment that we have before we add more of that type of equipment to it. So that, that's kind of installed with, trying to get things going right now. But we were talking about it a couple of weeks ago and looking at it, looking at some other front ends to work that system again. So as we move forward with it, you know, we'll keep, keep everybody in the loop on it.
Okay. And then my last construction question, I was just curious, are all the sinks in our bathrooms touchless at this point? Or do we have a ways to go with replacing some of those?
No, the only ones that are touchless are in the new work at, at Washington. I think we might have just a handful spread throughout the district elsewhere. We looked at that and I put together a rough estimate that I gave to Eric, I don't know, a month or so ago. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I wanna say it was close to $300,000 to change out the faucets. And that's assuming that we don't run into any, any major problems doing it and that, and that they're pretty adaptable to our current sinks because, you know, everything is based on, your whole center is on the sink and, and all of that. So assuming that we can get the right ones to fit into some of our older sink basins, we came up with close to $300,000 on, on that. So what we did was, we had, I had the district plumber go through and check every faucet in the district. They have timed up actuators on them for hot and cold to make sure that they're all timed out at 20 to 30 seconds, long enough so that you can wash your hands without touching the faucet again. So we went through and made those repairs in the meantime.
So Ron, you're saying that all our faucets don't require you to touch them to turn them off after you've washed your hands?
Correct.
So there would be no need for, there would be no need for electronic touchless faucets at that point? Because once you wash your hands, they're, you're not touching the faucet again, so now you're sanitized.
Well, assuming that you wash your hands in the, you know, the 20 to 30 seconds that they time out in, and, you know.
No, even, I mean, you could, even if you press it again and you continue washing, then,
Right.
you're, as long as you're not touching it after you're done washing your hands, it works the same way as a, as a battery-powered touchless one. So.
Yes.
And the, and the battery-powered ones are nothing but problems. You forget the cost of inputting them in. The maintenance on them is, is crazy expensive.
Well, and all your parts hang underneath the sink. And we know what, what the kids do to some of these things that are, you know, we have, we have problems with them kicking the traps out under the sinks and in the science labs ripping the gas lines out from under the tables and things. You know, kids are gonna be kids, so, you know, that's just all the more maintenance on all of those type of faucets with everything exposed like that.
Other questions from the board for Luanne or for Rick and Ron?
Luanne, this list was really helpful to me for seeing like this five years since I'm newer on the board. And I'm curious, and Rick kind of alluded to this in response to some of our public comments, are we keeping track of things that are specifically COVID-related expenses? Just so we see, you know, I know there's things that might be COVID, might not, but there's some true COVID expenses, so we are.
So we have set up a code within our accounting system so that items that are truly attributable to COVID are being charged to there. So things that we would not have purchased except for COVID, because of COVID. Because we also don't know they could show up with federal money, so I wanna make sure we're ready.
Oh, that's great. All right. And now, if I understand correctly, what you presented on SchoolDude, the maintenance management system is newer to us from 2015?
Yes, they had it, but they weren't utilizing it. So Ron and I had used it in '23, so Ron was super familiar with it. So we've got it fully up and running.
When, when we started with the district, they, they were paying for SchoolDude, but the district was only using the work order as generated by, say, a teacher wanting a pencil sharpener hung. They weren't using. They weren't using the preventive maintenance side of it or the automated. Right now I've got it set up so that at different times of year, different work orders will come due and get assigned straight to different maintenance people. So let's say the heating season's coming. Everybody, it comes to me first and then I decide whether it goes to a maintenance guy or if I call General Mechanical, time to come out, prepare the boilers for startup, open up the steam boilers. You've got to, you know, blow them all out and what, you know, whatever maintenance needs to be done so that to make sure that when you need heat, that they're going to be ready to operate. Where before they didn't have anything automated saying to do things like that. We have reports that come out and and remind the head custodians to go through and check all the emergency lights and exit lights to make sure that they're working and they have to sign off on those every month. There's reports that come out and say, go, go do your roof check and clean the roof drains to make sure that those are all cleared and those come out every month. We've got probably as a guest, 3,500 automated work orders that come out automatically to remind us to do different, different tasks throughout the year. And you can track each, each one of them and run reports on each one of them too.
I think I need one at home.
Yeah.
A house dude.
Kind of a honeydew.
I just felt like we needed to laugh right now. I mean, it's been, it's been a night, so.
I thought the exact same thing Denise.
Yeah, my wife asks me all the time why I can remember the stuff for work, but not for home.
You need a hubby dude.
So I know we're not voting on anything with this. This was more of a presentation, but any other questions for, for any of our team on this?
I have a question for Luann. Some time ago, we talked about because of COVID that we're going to have to increase the custodial staff and we're probably going to bring in some health service people and some teaching assistants are going to have to be increased or how are we coming along with that?
Actually Joel's going to talk about that in just a few minutes.
All right.
That's, that's two down the road here on the agenda. All right, anything else for, for Ron or Rick or Luann? All right. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Ron and, and Rick and Luann for all the work and great job on the project. It really does look great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item, the first reading of policies from press 105. So Dr. Olson, you want to take that away?
Carol, did you want to?
Okay, I can just do that. That's our first reading of the policies from press 105, the policy committee met virtually on September 15th. So we're suggesting the adoption of all of the press revisions with the exception of five colon 330, we're keeping our own version. That's the one about sick days, vacation, holidays and leaves. And then policy two colon two six five is a new one. That's title nine sexual harassment grievance procedure. So I've received no comments from board members, but tonight let, let us know if you have any comments or any further revisions to these policies.
Any comments from the board on any of them?
And then later on in the meeting, when we go to the, the other issues, then we'll talk about the other policies that we discussed, I think in two different places later on in our meeting. So right now we're just talking about press 105.
Yep. Tony, anything from your end? Sorry to cut you off guard there that you wanted to bring up on, on press 105?
Nope, not at all. I mean, she already highlighted that the big one is two colon two six five because of the updates, title nine and the new requirements. So we've been recommending that districts adopt this policy.
Great. All right. So per board policy, we'll have a second read of this at the next meeting and then if everyone's still on board with it at that point, we will adopt. All right. So thanks to Carol and Rebecca for the hard work again in the policy committee. Okay, moving on to our personnel report. So I know we have kind of two parts to this. One is just the standard personnel report that we have. There's the other part that I know Joel and Dr. Olson want to touch on some potential bigger picture items. So are you all right, Joel, if we kind of talk about that separately and we can do that first and then we'll just do the, you know, the person, the actual personnel report after that?
Yep, that'll work.
Okay.
Okay, so and you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. It sounded weird in the headphones, so I apologize for that. So as we look to move forward here and we get into the situation of, you know, moving to the hybrid and starting to reopen, as we've discussed at one of the previous meetings, the doctor also went over the plan. We would need additional staff for this. So we just want to let the board know and be aware of what some of those particulars are and what would be coming. As I think that has been discussed previously, we would need to add night custodians and I can go over our plan a little bit so you have an idea of what that would mean. We are anticipating and looking at the additional need of custodians during the day in particular. As we are changing over classrooms, wiping down things, doing more frequent cleaning during the day than we've ever done before. We are looking to move a night custodian at the buildings to our days so that we can support all of those new cleaning aspects that are going to happen during the day. And then bring in night custodians to support the regular needs and making sure we're getting those clean. So in an ideal situation, we'd be looking at eight to 10, one for every building and up to possibly one or two additional floaters as we have people go out, just typical, you know, custodians do get sick and I'm not saying COVID sick, just regular sick, having, make sure we have enough people to back up and supply that. Currently we have five gentleman ready to go with a six on his way. So working through the process of getting people, if the board is okay, ready to go and trained and hired. We would look to have an additional up to seven health assistants within the district. Currently we have identified two, we've got a third that I'm speaking with tomorrow to see if they're interested. And then we would need to look at additionally hiring either TAs, long-term subs to support many of the situations with our teachers and our teacher assistants. Where due to certified medical situations, they may not be able to come in and we would need additional people to support and work in their place. So I can get into greater detail about this, but that's kind of a broad overview. So we just wanted to tell the board, you know, these would be hirings that are directly, directly related to the situation that we're in. They would not typically happen in a regular year and obviously they'd be things we would look to reevaluate as the year went on and we moved hopefully, you know, into a situation where everybody came back, we moved into more normalcy. And, you know, if these were needed or not. But I could take some questions or Dr. Olson, if you'd like me to expand or anything else you'd like to add at that?
Well, I have a quick question. Actually, one I wanted to ask if Larry's, if that answered Larry's questions or he's got more, but really a quick one for you, Joel, and that is you know, given that we're starting next week, are you anticipating that you're going to come to the board at the regular meeting next time around for us to approve? Are you thinking that things might be moving so quickly with the reopening of the schools next week that you might have to call an emergency meeting of the board?
No, I wouldn't need to call an emergency meeting. We would, you know, with the permission of the board, as we've done in the past, as we do typically in the month of August. When the need arises, we would go to get the people trained, started, ready to go and then bring them, you know, for board approval at the next meeting. Which again is one of the situations that we typically do. It's most seen in the month of October, but does happen frequently or periodically throughout the rest of the year.
Okay. So generally, just so we're all on the same page here, you're looking for some consensus from us tonight that you can move forward with that?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Dr. Olson, did you? Oh, go ahead, sorry, sorry.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're coding this to COVID and we've got money in the budget for everybody that we need to hire or we're going to have to move money around or what's the plan?
We have, all of the additional people are not in the budget right now. As I had explained when we adopted the budget, that more than likely that wouldn't be our like final, final budget. We do have the money in our savings account basically, so in our fund balances to accommodate the additional expense and they the additional ones would be charged to a COVID account because if not for COVID, we wouldn't have hired them.
Right. Can you get close to a number on then the, a number of TAs we're going to have to hire?
If we go with TAs, my guess would be as of, and where I'm saying Larry, guess I think this, as Dr. Olson alluded to, the numbers in the situations with why with staff medical concerns is fluid, but at the immediate reaction or at today, I would say 12.5 to 13.
And also just to clarify is that, you know, if a teacher is, has a medical condition and is going to be teaching from home, then we're looking for someone to be able to be at school for supervision and to help with management of the class. So, you know, that staff member that's staying home is still working. They're just working in a different context and unfortunately that we have to hire an additional position in order to make that work.
Yeah. And, and I should clarify one point for Larry here. When I say 12.5 to 13, that could be a combination of TAs or that could be used as subs or long-term subs depending on the situation. But that would all fall into that one category.
Right.
So I, I'm going to potentially wet my finger and touch the third rail right now when I say what I'm about to say. So here goes. And there's only 40 people left in attendance online, so the other 300 don't get to hear this, but Joel and or Dr. Dr. Olson. Many people tonight, several people tonight spoke about people volunteering to clean hallways and work in rooms and do all sorts of other stuff. Can you just enlighten us and the community on how that would or wouldn't work, given the fact that we have three collective bargaining units in the district and how, you know, that likely would probably not fly. For instance, having parents come in in the afternoons to clean instead of hiring custodians to do that and potentially what the health issues are with that?
Yeah, I, I guess I would answer and Tony Louiezy might be able to jump in, but I think our, like with our custodians union, I would think that they would be saying or potentially saying that we are taking union jobs away from them. I would go back, however, what I would maybe counter to that is that we have a need for lunchroom supervisors and support in the middle of the day and we do pay those people. And so we would be more than happy to have community members who have spoken about volunteering to come and work at our lunchroom programs and helping to not only supervise kids, but I'm sure there are, as our building administrators and lunchroom supervisors can say, there are cleaning aspects of that position also.
Having been a lunchroom person, I can, I want to applaud you, sir. And we have many, many openings for lunchroom folks. We've been begging for them for years.
Yep.
So Tony, do you want to just touch on it a little bit so that we can get this issue addressed and out in the open? From a collective bargaining perspective?
Of volunteers coming in and working for no money?
Well, volunteers working in and, you know, acting as quasi custodians or quasi teachers in, you know, in the district.
Well, like everything else in 2020, it's, it's just different. Certainly in a normal time, if you were trying to bring in different labor, cheaper labor, potentially contract labor and you had bargaining unit that covered that kind of work. Yeah, traditionally that, that would be an issue that could potentially be an unfair labor practice. And certainly that's still at issue. But this is a different time and, and I'm not saying it's, it's possible or impossible, but if, if it was something that we had to do, what we would do is we'd sit down with the union and we talked to them about it. Cause we've got to remember these are potentially temporary positions. Right? These, these aren't long-term, we're, we're not adding 10 FTE forever. So it is a little bit different and we could talk to them about it, but obviously there are health and safety and qualification issues. But, you know, people are getting creative now and trying to find, if you can't find people, other sources to help out. I don't know about in custodial maintenance. That's not where it's been. In some of the other districts, it's been more with teaching assistants and like you said, lunch supervisors and things along those lines where we could maybe tap some resources in our community for individuals that may be available to help us with that during, for a temporary time.
But I think a key thing that you just said there is if we couldn't find someone and, and I think what was proposed tonight, just as one example is, you know, a bunch of parents start coming in cleaning the place at night. Well, we've just been given a proposal to hire a bunch of custodians. Yeah.
Yeah. What I tell those parents is that we have postings and we're looking for custodians.
Right. Right.
And lunchroom supervisors and aides. So if, if, if parents are willing to help, go to our website and apply.
Cause I guess Joel, what I'm hearing is you have a few health assist, health assistants or people to fill those positions, but if I remember, this position was posted before when we were opening a few months ago and we had a hard time filling it. So I think whoever is listening, let's help us to get some folks into those roles.
Yep, I would totally agree.
And I would also add, you know, just so the board knows, you know, unfortunately what's happening is, you know, we've hired certain people who have come back to us and said, I've changed my mind, I can't do this. We've had subs that have volunteered to be there and then right when it comes up to the time where we need them, they're like, sorry, I didn't realize what this was going to be. And so, you know, we're constantly having to, you know, evolve as each of those new pieces comes available. So, you know, I, I think even if the staff that we're looking at this week might not be the exact same that we're looking at next week. It shouldn't really fluctuate that often, but it is a, it is a factor that of something that unfortunately Joel's office has to really deal with on a day-to-day basis.
So I guess moral of the story is more to come on this at our next meeting. We'll, we'll be hearing more about this, but in the meantime, tonight, unless anyone else has any other questions on, on that bigger picture item, we've got a small personnel report to review and approve. So if anyone wants to make that motion.
Okay. Action item 20 dash 10 dash two, I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois approved the personnel report for October 8th, 2020, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the boards' direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
Okay.
You two have all the motions tonight, don't you? You're just trading off. Okay. So it was moved and seconded. Denise had the motion, Fred had the second. Any discussion with regard to the personnel report or Joel, anything you wanted to bring up with us on it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, hearing none. Natasha, anything from the public? And Dr. Olson, I assume still an empty room?
Correct.
Okay, roll call please.
Salas, yes, Little?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Biagi?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Carol. Okay. So we've got consent agenda as we, as we always do, I like to ask if there's anyone who thinks that, or wishes to have anything in particular removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately, or if everyone's all right with voting on it as presented?
I would like to remove policy four colon 180.
Okay. That is so removed now. Anything else from anyone? All right. So why don't we do the consent agenda motion minus four, 180, and then we'll do a separate motion where we can have some discussion on that on the backend. If anyone wants to make the motion. Don't all speak at once.
I moved that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated Schools 64, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois approved the
Niles, Illinois, approved the consent agenda for October 8th, 2020, which includes bills, payroll, and benefits, approval of financial update for the period ending August 31st, 2020, approval of reciprocal reporting intergovernmental agreement with the, between the Village of Niles and the Boards of Education of School Districts number 63, 64, 71, in Cook County, Illinois, approval of hold or release of closed minutes, and destruction of audio closed recordings, none.
Second.
Thanks Rebecca for the second, Fred for reading that. I won't use my usual joke of having you reread it again. So do we have any discussion on the consent agenda minus section or policy 4180? No questions from the board? Okay. Natasha, anything from the public?
No comments received.
All right. I think we can take a roll call.
Okay. Biagi?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Dallas, yes, Little?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we pulled out section 4180. And for those of you following along at home, it is on page, I'm trying to figure out what page this is on, on it. Gosh, it's not showing me right now, but it is.
155, is it?
Yeah, no, it's, yes, I think that's, yes, 155 there. It's finally showing up on my screen. One, it starts on 155 and goes for several pages there. So for everybody on the board to follow along as well too. Rebecca, do you, since you pulled it out, do you want to lead us through that conversation?
Sure. I mean, we've talked about this at at least two board meetings and at least two policy meetings, maybe one. And we had discussed sort of what the district means when it says that the district will approve the plan. And when we had our late last policy meeting, we kept it with the district. And hang on one second, I got to kick a kid out of here. You, you gotta go, you gotta go. So, working from home.
Yeah.
And it basically, there, some people, the majority of the board thought the district really meant the superintendent, and it was sort of the squishier language. And I would have preferred it be the board. So I just want to pull it out because I don't love the squishier language.
Sorry, I was unmute there. So thanks for teaming that up. So while we don't have a motion on the table right now, and I guess we can do this a couple of ways. We can talk about this right now and come to some sort of consensus on where we're going and then put a motion on the table. Or we can put the motion on the table for the version as presented and debate it and have an up or down vote on it. And whatever happens, happens at that point. So I'm, I'm fine either way. If anyone wants to chime in on how they'd like to see that go.
Option B seems more efficient, right?
Okay. All right. Then would someone make the motion to approve this as presented? And then, and if it's seconded, then we can have the conversation.
So a motion to approve policy four colon 180?
Yep.
Did that?
I think, yeah, I think that's right. Yep, I think so. As, as presented. Any, is there a second on that motion? I'll second it. I have that. I have that ability. There we go. All right. So we're in discussion now on it. So do we want to, so Rebecca, just, I'm trying to find the language again, exactly where we are in here. It is.
When I look at the, the one that was posted to the public, it looks like it's 119. But then, you know, in our internal board wiki, obviously, you could just click on A, what is it, under A7?
It's A7, right?
Yeah. But then, if you're looking at the, the big report, that is, let me see, 119. So what we did with this, originally, we started off with the press, what was it, 104?
Right.
Language with IASB stuff. So then the board had discussions at two meetings where the majority did not agree with the, you know, IASB suggestions. So we removed those. And then Tony Louiezy gave us, you know, variations. So after the last meeting, it seemed like everyone would be on board with just the statutory language. So Tony did give us an option that was, you know, pretty short. It was concise. It was pretty much the statutory language with the addition of a slash and an or. So just in case you guys are wondering, if you wanted to look on page.
159 of our packet, right? The language in the, in the sidebar?
Correct. I mean, I don't know, I don't, my, if I look at the report, it doesn't go up to 159. So I don't know why these numbers are so high. But if you look at the, let's see, I'm seeing 123. I don't know if anyone else has one. Wait, wait, let me see if there's another version.
So for the public, for the public report?
Public version?
It starts at page 119, but your, your board report has a few additional pages.
Okay, so 119, but then the language from Tony would be on page 123 of 157. So that's at the far right side, if anyone wants to look.
Right. And for the board?
Right.
And for the board, it's on 159 of 168.
And just to summarize, I mean, when we say the language from Tony, it's, it's the language from the statute.
Right, correct. With the addition, yeah, with the addition of the slash and the or.
Right.
Because this, yeah, the statute says, let's see.
Yeah. But what I, what I was getting at, I mean, at essence, what the issue is, regardless of what the language says, and because that came after the fact, is whether or not the board wanted to take a formal vote on a plan that involved remote hybrid learning. And the majority of the board reached a consensus that they did not want to take a formal vote. They certainly wanted to be apprised of it. But there was no formal vote. So then we went with the language, which is strictly, is mirroring the statute, except for an and slash or. So really, the essence still is, the question, does the board want to take formal action on this plan? Or are they delegating the approval, like the statute says, to the superintendent? Again, both options are viable.
So the other issue is Tony's interpretation of that statute. Because if we're mirroring the statutory language, my position is still that when it says the district shall adopt, that it still means, you know, the board has to do that. So we could adopt this because we have to follow Illinois law anyway. But I would still disagree with the interpretation of that policy if we were to adopt it as is, which is why I was in favor of the IASB clarification.
Well, the IASB clarification in our, isn't a clarification, it's changing the statute. Because as I said, in our opinion, we, we reviewed this. And again, it's new, so it hasn't been litigated. But when the legislators intended the Board of Education to take an action, they have expressly stated the Board of Education. And again, the other thing that led us to believe that our interpretation is correct is that it goes against every principle that if the board has to take action on something and approve it, but the statute later says that the superintendent can amend it at any time. Again, that, that flies right in the face of usually when we need board approval.
Correct. And then the other issue was the two verbs in that statute. One verb was adopt, and then the action, the actor for adopt would be the district, and the verb approve. And in that case, it was clear that the superintendent was approving that plan. So it contemplates two different things going on. And it also does contemplate the ability of the superintendent to make those changes. So we wouldn't have to go through that cumbersome process of needing a board meeting every single time, except for, as we discussed before, when Tony explained those examples, when you are moving from, let's say purely remote to a hybrid, or from a hybrid to, you know, a fully in-person. So those are times when you would want to bring it back to the board. So I do agree that yes, possibly the statute was poorly written, but I do believe that it does not place all of the, I'd say, authority and burden on just the superintendent, that it does contemplate board action. But, you know, we've been through this all already. And so now we have, this is the version, which is mirrored, you know, it mirrors the statute. So it takes out, if you look at page, let's see. Well, in your report, it would be 123 to 124. Or Rick, I don't know what pages you're looking at. So it would be the last two of four colon 180. Where we, so if we do purely the statutory language, plus the addition of the slash and the or, then we're taking, we're deleting the whole, all of the text on those last two pages. Rick, is that what you envisioned?
Right. Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're saying here. Right. And Tony, that, that comports with the statute. What's proposed, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't fly in the face of it. No, it doesn't.
So, can I chime in? Can I chime in here a little bit?
Sure.
I mean, regardless of the, the argument of back and forth on how this statute was extremely poorly written, I think what we as a board have to decide is, several months ago, when we made a decision to just move in the direction we went, we knew that a super majority of our population wanted to go back to school in some, in some fashion of some hybrid. Now we know something different. We know something more on above and beyond that. We know that not only do we have a super majority of our, of our residents that want to go back, but a large percent of those people actually wrote to us and showed up telling us that they are not happy with the plan we did put forth. And almost all of them told us as board members that they want us to be more actively involved. So having heard that from a very, you know, I've sat on this board for a really long time, and I've seen, I've seen us move in different directions with a lot less people coming and demanding it. This was a, this was a big movement. This wasn't a small amount of people that came to express their dissatisfaction with what we, what, what we proposed to them. So as a board, I think we should all maybe look at being a little bit more involved. And I don't know how that, you know, what, what that means and how we do it under the statute. But again, I just want to, I want to reiterate, it has nothing to do with showing that we don't support our administration and superintendent. I just think we need to jump in and help and be more involved and make sure we all work together to get a plan out there that our residents will be, we be happy with.
And manage.
Of course, being safe too, at the same time.
Yeah. If, if I could just jump in with, now, this is obviously my own opinion, but because 70% of our parents chose in-person, and that would be thousands of parents, and due to the number of emails or people that showed up tonight, I would say we've heard from a very small minority, not the majority.
With all due respect, Dr. Olson, I, I agree with you on your, your math. However, we know that, I mean, the majority spoke when they said they wanted to go back to in-person learning of some sort. And a large portion of, a large number of individuals sent us emails and showed up. And as I said in my earlier statement, this board has moved in a different direction, has, has made U-turns and left turns and right turns with much less showing than what we saw, you know, today, in a very short period of time. So I, I don't, I don't feel that only having 50 people, because I don't think, I don't think 50 people at a board meeting to speak about an issue that they, that they feel, that they feel is important is a small number. And then you add to that the new number of amounts of emails that we've all had to been, had to read over the last several days. I think that there's enough people out there that have shown us that they want this board to move forward. Let's, you know, let's be honest. I won my last election by less votes than the amount of people that showed up to this meeting today. So every vote, every person matters.
Well, there's a lot to unpack there.
So just for, I'm just screen sharing, so you see where the insertion of the slash and the or would be right here, where this little hand is.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think, I mean, obviously, there's an elephant in the room here with, you know, the statutory language. Because Tony, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it sounds to me like I've already heard that we could adopt this statutory language. But there are board members who believe that your interpretation is inaccurate, and they would adhere to another interpretation of that, the exact same language we're all looking at, which means that under this language as written, the board could go either way. The board could say, yep, we're going to adopt, we're going to vote on a plan, or no, we're not going to vote on a plan. Am I?
Well, with, with all due respect, you could do that anyway. You can do that without policy. You can do this with this policy. I don't think the issue being discussed right now is really about 4180.
Yeah.
I think that the issue being discussed is whether or not, after what you've heard tonight, the district is thinking about reconsidering the, the hybrid plan that, that's been presented. And whether 4180 is in place the way it's drafted by IASB, or way it's drafted, like the statute, the way that this board and this administration work together, I don't think that would get in the way of you guys having open dialogue about what your desires are and how you want to proceed. So I think that's the bigger issue. I think that the language in the statute is kind of a side issue. I think the bigger issue on the table is.
Just for the record, though, we have been talking about the squishy language before there were a bunch of people coming tonight. So.
So again, so, so Rebecca, just so I can kind of piggyback on that, do you think, do you think this is still squishy, what's being proposed right now? And what, what would be your proposal to unsquishy it? Would it be that you would formally say, in there, the board must, you know, whatever, adopt, ratify the plan by the superintendent? Is that what you're proposing as the unsquishy language?
Right. And I, we have probably discussed that in a policy meeting. They're all in together, and that was not, based on our last meeting, what the majority had wanted. So we didn't write it that way. But that is my preference. Yes.
Right. Okay. Just so I understand. So that, I mean, that is an option, right? We could say no to this language, and we could say we want very clear language that, that requires that the board adopt any plan specifically for remote learning and, and in-person, you know, during the pandemic, that the board adopt it, formally ratify it. So we don't have a motion on the table right now. Oh, we do, actually. Sorry, Denise, and I seconded it. You're right. So we have a motion on the table with regard to the language that has been proposed right now. And I think you've just heard our board attorney say that that language could be construed either way, and could be, and the board has the authority either way to ratify the plan or not ratify the plan, or take a vote or not take a vote on, on the superintendent's plan. So.
If I can, if I can interrupt, we also have a public comment on this issue whenever you're ready with.
Okay. So that's one way. The other way would be to adopt language that would be clear. I, I guess there's a third way, which is you could adopt language that's clear the other way, that the board shall not, you know, adopt it. That's the third option, right?
That's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, we've gone with the statutory language. You can go with IASB's language. You can change the language and make it clear. But I do agree with whatever it is, everybody should clearly be able to understand what it means.
Yep. So, I mean, we can go a couple ways right now. We could just do an up or down vote. If we've got a public comment, we can talk more about it. We can see where this one goes. Or if someone, I mean, Denise, you, I think you made the motion on this. So if you want to go a different route, you could rescind the motion. But what, I guess, why don't we do this? Why don't we hear the public comment first, and then maybe we'll go back and we'll, we'll chat. So Natasha, do you want to read that?
Yes, this public comment is from Kelly Lawrence. Hello, could you please define squishy?
Unclear. That the language, it can be interpreted a couple of different ways. So when you read it, is it, the district is the term in question? Is the district Eric? Is the district the board? Is the district all of us together? It's just, it's not super clear to me what that, that term, the district, means and who's supposed to act.
So Rebecca, you believe it needs to, and I just want to make sure, because I think I'm fuzzy, maybe it's because it's 10:30. But so are you thinking that it should either say the board or the superintendent? Is that the one or the two languages you want to see?
Yes, I want to know who it is and who is responsible and what specifically we're voting on. Who is it?
Okay. And then what do you think it should be? So if it's those two options, the board or the superintendent, what would you like it to be?
That the administration or superintendent comes up with a plan and the board votes. In your language than that, but that would be the meaning.
Okay. You know, and my only, my biggest reservation on that is with COVID and things are changing so much. I mean, one of our schools that was mentioned, the school districts invite public comments, they were in school for a few days and they had to switch to remote. And I don't want the board to impede that. And, you know, we want to keep health and safety. I think all of us agree with that. And so I don't want to be stopping that or halting that or, you know, making that go slower. So that is what that is my reservation.
And in that case, I mean, if we're moving back out of remote because of a public health thing, then I don't know that we, we're not superseding that. If, you know, the state shuts down, it doesn't matter what we say. So I guess because this is about disasters, not about emergencies and not about every policy we have, that's why I don't feel as uncomfortable with it.
So any other thoughts from any board members on which way we want to go with this? Again, we can, we can take an up or down vote on the, I'll, I'll use your term, Rebecca, the squishy language, or we can say, no, we're not going to vote on that squishy language and we're going to vote on something else, whether it's, you know, it's clear one way or the other. And if I don't hear anymore, I'll call the question and then we'll just do it and we'll see, we'll see where we are. All right, I'm going to call the question then.
Fred, what's your thoughts on this? I didn't, I didn't, I don't think we heard from you or Larry.
I'm fine with it marrying the statutory language. I mean, at the end of the day, the board can decide that it's not going to, that it's going to ignore this policy. The board has the power and authority to overrule the superintendent anyways and change course. I don't think this really binds us one way or another.
I haven't created a motion, Rick, so I wouldn't, you know, I didn't think of one for this. But I would like to say that, you know, we did this going by the statutory language thing last month or a month and a half ago. And we'd still had the power to override, but none of us got involved to know enough about the plan to identify that this many people would have been upset with it. Or we all just felt it was perfect. I'm not sure which way it is, because I don't recall any of us really discussing it. So I don't think continuing the way we have is the proper way for this board. I think we should draft a motion tonight that specifically says what involvement we are going to have moving forward. I personally would like to see a full-blown plan that says exactly what's going to happen now, what our administration came up with, and what happens if we if we have to revert back to in-home because of a spread and how we go back into remote and how we eventually get into full-time in-class learning. I'd like to just see a whole plan. And I don't want to see one that that we are working on on the fly and as we go. So personally, I think this board should get a little bit more involved in the process. And I don't think the way we're currently doing it, adopting whatever, you know, what we what we have adopted is is going to accomplish that. So how can I create a motion that would?
Well, you can't right now. You're out of order.
Oh, sorry.
So right now, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded and we need to decide whether we're going to call an up or down vote. I've called the question, so I'm asking for a roll call vote on it right now.
Earl?
Yes.
Soto?
No.
Biagi?
Yes.
Salas, no. Little?
No.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. So 4180 is adopted. So now, 4180 as presented with the statutory language is adopted. Now, again, as I've heard our counsel say, and actually Rebecca say, this language is squishy. This gives the board latitude to go in either direction as it sees fit. So do I have that right still, Tony? I do. Okay. So now with respect to what Tom's request was, I'm guessing, Tony, that we can't formally vote on anything like that tonight because it wasn't on the agenda and it would be in violation of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to do so.
Correct.
So the only way that we could entertain that idea would be to have a general discussion on it under new business. Correct? Okay. So if we want to do that, I would suggest we get through the last couple of things on the agenda and then we can add that to the discussion on new business. But knowing that we are prohibited by law from taking a vote on that tonight so that the public understands, again, we're not derelict in our duties, we have laws that we have to follow. All of these board members have to follow. So let's move on to approval of minutes. If someone would like to read that motion?
Action item 20-10-4. I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, approve the minutes from the closed meeting on September 10, 2020, and the regular meeting on September 10, 2020. Second.
Okay. Any discussion from the board on these minutes? Does anyone need to abstain from this? This was just one meeting, so I think everybody was here for that. All right. Any, if there's no discussion from the board, anything from the public, Natasha?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay. And just, I guess I'll ask one last time, no changes to the minutes as presented that anyone's got? Okay. All right, let's take a roll call vote on this.
Salas, yes. Biagi?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Dr. Olson, we've got a couple of items for discussion there.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, our next regular meeting is on November 12. Although I did give the board an update previously on my PTO PTA president's meeting, I did just want to reiterate again, they've been an excellent group with whom to work. They are very dedicated parents that have a lot of good insights. And I really appreciate my opportunity to meet with them regularly so that I can hear their input and feedback as well on the district. So I always appreciate that. And then I think Carol already talked about our board policy committee meeting, so I don't think I need to say anything more there.
Great.
I do just have one, one other thing to add. So at our policy committee meeting, we did discuss policy for colon 60 purchases and contracts, but we believe that we need, you know, further information and further discussions about that before we even propose, you know, an amended for colon 60. So, you know, send me any comments if you have any thoughts about that.
All right, on to new business. Is there any other new business other than what we're going to start talking about here in a moment? All right. I'm kind of at a loss for words at a moment because I'm watching my phone light up and some of the commentary that's being put on that private Facebook page right now about elected officials right now is pretty appalling. I thought how people handled themselves tonight also was pretty appalling and I'm embarrassed for our city right now. I think a lot of us are in this call. I'm embarrassed for Dr. Olson. I'm embarrassed as an elected official. I, I'm really at a loss for words. I'm embarrassed, at least for one of our board members who I thought did something pretty uncool tonight at the meeting. But we're here now, we're going to talk about it and we're going to be professionals about it. So I'm going to put that aside and we're going to have a conversation.
Tony, I had a, sorry, Rick, I had a quick question about OMA, IOMA and all that stuff. So communications during a board meeting, going either way, are those, those are public records, right? If it's about, you know, board business during a meeting?
Communications between board members.
Or even the public, right? Because we are convening as a board and then the body exists while we're in a meeting. So I just wanted clarification about that.
The case that you're talking about had to do with?
The champagne to be mad again, right?
Yeah, but that was between? Between board members. Betting in the board. Yeah.
So if we're messaging each other, so, you know, if some of that stuff happened, then that's all in the public record, just because, you know, Rick mentioned that he's getting, I don't know what you're getting, Rick.
Yeah, I think, but I'm. I'm watching my, for clarity's sake, Carol, I'm not getting text messages. I'm watching my Facebook light up with people commenting about the seven of us on Facebook right now. That's not an IOMA violation.
Okay. No, I'm not saying a violation. I'm just saying if something's a public record that needs to be preserved, I'm not saying that anyone's violating IOMA, but just what's a public record? That's all.
All right. So Tom, since you've brought us here, you want to take this away?
Sure. First, I'd like to address your last comment.
Hey, Tom, could you turn your camera on? It'd be great to see you as we're talking about this.
Yeah, I could, but I'm not going to. So I'm going to continue with my conversation. Rick, I'm going to first address what you just said and I don't appreciate your saying that you're embarrassed by our community for coming and then discussing.
Hey, Tom, you're breaking up. I can't hear you.
They've extremely, may, may some of that, I think, yeah, I don't think any of this is from, I needed to clarify a statement you made in your opening monologue that was misinterpreted by some of the people that were there. So, which is why I stepped in and I stepped to the podium only because I wasn't being, you couldn't hear me through my phone, through my Zoom. And I am also a parent in this district, so I think I have a, an opinion on that matter. And I don't really appreciate you being offended or embarrassed by me having to speak, say something that I felt like saying. Having said that, I feel I was extremely fair, not only to Dr. Olson, but to administration, when I said that my request to be more involved should not be taken as having no, having no support or no confidence in the work that they have done. I have all the confidence in the work that they have done. I just feel as an elected official in a situation that is as grave as this one, that we should be more involved. I felt that way when I asked the board to consider being more involved. I didn't want to be a rubber stamp board member who would vote yes or no to something that I had no involvement in, that I had no idea of how it got to where it got, which is why I asked for us to be more involved. And I wanted that to be very clear to everybody. And I still feel the exact same way, which is why I'm asking that this board should consider, since passing some sort of resolution, next board meeting or something, or having a consensus and agreement, that we will be more actively involved in a plan that is a long-term plan for for this COVID issue that we're going through. Because it could be with us for a year. It could be with with us longer. And I don't think any parent in this district, including myself, want to have to wait a week or two weeks to find out what the next step is. I think we would like to all have a long-term plan that we know that we can rely on. We all understand that it's going to be fluid. We all understand that there's going to be minor changes back and forth, but we'd like to see an outline of how things are going to progress. We're going to go back to school two days a week. If we go back to school two days a week and things go well, we're going to go back to school four days a week. We're going to go back AMs, PMs, whatever, whatever the the solution is that that our superintendent and our administration comes up with. Because yes, I do agree, they are the ones that have the knowledge to be able to make those decisions. But we, as elected officials, also have the obligation to make sure that those decisions are made and that the information is given to the public and that we have a good plan that we can work off of as an outline moving forward for long-term. And in that plan should also be a regressive motion. If something happens and we have some type of active spread in our schools, how are we going to pull back? How long are we going to pull back for? What is that pullback going to look like? And what is the reinjection into the schools going to look like? We don't have any of that right now. And it's, everybody in the district is probably frustrated because they just don't know. And I understand that maybe our administration doesn't know either, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to put together a plan and then we can work off of that.
So, Tom, I agree with your statements about board involvement. I just believe that that IASB version of the pandemic policy would address some of those issues because if the superintendent knew that he needed the board to adopt the plan, then all of those steps that you mentioned before would have been necessary. If there was the chance that the board would reject adoption, then why would he risk it if he knew that we didn't, you know, there were not four people on board with it?
So I'd like to let Dr. Olson address some of this right now because I think there's a lot of assumptions being made that there is no plan. So, Dr. Olson, do you want to address that?
Yeah, thank you. That, you know, and I understand that, you know, the board only has as much, you know, of a chance to see the plan and talk things through, you know, as they do. And I certainly understand that. And I also, you know, I work for the board, so I am, you know, will follow and I serve the board in whatever way that you direct me. I certainly am okay with you being more involved. I think what's really difficult is that it adds another layer to what we're trying to do. So in order for me to get a plan forward, I have to get the administrators to a certain point, I have to get the teachers to a certain point, I have to get the assistants to a certain point, the custodians and so forth. But now I have another group that's weighing in on the plan. And if you potentially vote to go one way or the other that we haven't even planned for or prepared for, it changes a lot of the context. And you might give suggestions, but then I have to go back and do that with five groups before I can say that that, you know, will work or not, or that's agreeable. So I, I don't blame you for wanting to be involved. That's perfectly fine. I would want to be available to any of you as much as you need for me to go into the plan to the level of detail that you'd like me to go into. I think what I'm saying is just the fact that it will continue, it will add layers of challenge to what we're trying to accomplish. If the board feels that those are necessary layers, then then I'll support that. But it does add layers. I guess I'd also want, I, sorry, I'd also want the board to know that of the emails we received this week, I received three times the emails from parents saying, thank you for the hybrid plan, thank you for sticking and making safety number one, we're very excited to come next week. And, you know, we're looking very much forward to in-person learning. So, you know, that doesn't make that group right or anything. I'm just saying that there are a lot of points of view out there and I don't want us to get too focused on only one of those.
Rick, I don't think anyone was saying that there was no plan unless I misheard what Tom was saying. I mean, we've had, what, three versions of a plan? I mean, I think part of it is that the one that was presented to the public was drastically different from the one that we originally received. And then the one presented to the public was the one that was not implemented, which, you know, I understand.
But you know why it was, Carol. You know why it was, right? And we're not, we're not talking about the elephant in the room right now. You know precisely why it was. Dr. Olson knows precisely why it didn't implement it.
Right, and that's fine.
But my point is, everybody in the community that was here tonight is operating without those facts right now and we're not permitted to talk about those facts in public.
Right, I have to say, nobody, nobody said that there was no plans. I don't know where you.
Tom just said that he went, he listed a bunch of things that he said is not in place right now and that he would expect Dr. Olson to come back to. And I'm saying, Dr. Olson does have those things in place, but there have been a myriad of reasons, primarily related to collective bargaining, why a lot of those things didn't come public. We all know that and we're pretending that it doesn't exist.
But wait, Rick, I, I know we have a plan to go for two half-days for our seventh graders, two full-days for our sixth graders and so on for the rest of our kids. I asked, in my statement, I asked for a comprehensive plan of what it's going to look like moving forward, what has happened if we have to go backwards. So there's a lot more things involved in this plan. Is that plan in place? Because as a board member, I have not seen any of that.
Is that plan in place, Dr. Olson?
Yes. So everything in terms of having to go backwards is all already included within the plan. And, you know, I just think, again, it's the timing that we have been spending months to get to this point to launch, launch in-person tomorrow. Everybody has been working at non-stop pace to be prepared for this plan, for this plan to start. And we've had to unpack. And we've had to unpack layers and layers and layers and design systems and design all these pieces in order to make this plan work. And so we are on the eve of trying to launch it, and now we're, we're, we're deterring from it. And that, I, I, again, I have no problem giving people the information on the next steps in those pieces. We're trying to get schools started next week. I'd like to be able to get schools started, and then we can start talking about the next phase of the plan and the next piece going along.
So, so I guess my, one of my, I guess one of my concerns is that, and I, and any other board member that knows something that I don't, please, please speak up, and I will, I will back off. But I, as a board member, have no idea what the plan is beyond whatever plan was presented to our regular citizens, our regular residents, not elected officials. And as a board member, I feel that I should at least be involved or at least know what that plan is moving forward, so that I can then say, "Hey, wait, I don't agree with this plan, or I think we should do it a little differently." But we, as board members, found out about the current plan not much sooner than everybody else in Park Ridge found out about the current plan. And how can we do our job as board members, even if, even if we don't have a voting power or a veto power to veto it? We haven't even been given the power or the, the respect to even offer our opinion on it, because we don't know it.
So, Tom, I'm sorry.
And I, and my, at the last, at the last board meeting, when we voted to give the authority to administration to move forward, I specifically asked very politely to, you know, to get information so that we are involved in the process, so that we can give feedback if we needed to. And unless another board member here has gotten information that I didn't, or I missed it somehow, please let me know.
Well, I guess, Tom, that's what I wanted to share. I've had long, drawn-out conversations with several board members who have contacted me, that wanted to ask about certain aspects of the plan, wanted to understand the thinking behind why we made the certain decisions we did, have proposed alternative ideas that, that we've talked through. Um, so, you know, I, I, I want to be available to you in that way, and I'm sorry if you didn't feel that you had the information, but I, I, I want to be able to give it to you. Uh, and so perhaps we need to set up a time to be able to talk more.
Or you could present it to the board prior to giving it out. I mean, to have individual conversations, that, that, I don't, I don't feel that, I think that circumvents the whole board process. For me to call you and say, "Here's my opinion," uh, and then have another board member call you and say, "This is my opinion." I don't think it would work, is, is, works the way the board is intended to work. You know, I can make myself available for a board meeting at any time. When you do have a plan, you can say, "Hey, guys, here's my plan. Let's have a, let's have a meeting and discuss it, and, you know, see how it works." But I, I just don't understand why we are being left out of the process.
Tony, do you want to jump in here? Because I'm gonna step in a legal pile of something in a moment here if, if I say anything. So there's a reason that we are not having some of these conversations publicly, and it relates to collective bargaining right now, because we are in the midst of a collective bargaining agreement, correct?
We're, we, well, we have to bargain with all of the associations around the plan. There are certain issues that, um, you know, aren't final until they're final. We certainly can move into closed session and talk about those because they are related to collective bargaining, whether you want to do that tonight or at a, at a future board meeting.
But I'm talking more, I'm not talking about any one particular issue. I'm talking about generally why Dr. Olson has to do this the way he does, is because we have several bargaining units, and there's many pieces of the puzzle that have to fit together. That impact there, yeah. Right, and so he can't just lay out a plan that says we're going from soup to nuts here because everything has to be agreed to by a bunch of different people, let alone seven people.
Yeah, not, it, not everything needs to be agreed to, but it certainly needs to be discussed with them.
Right.
And we have to talk about the impact, and, and as has happened through those negotiations, and we sit down, things change. Um, after we meet with the association and the plan's been released, because that's, that's basically how this is working, not only at your district, but many districts are having to continuously pivot after meeting with their stakeholder groups and with their associations and unions, and meeting their obligation under the Labor Act to, to negotiate the impact of these plans on their work conditions and their wages and terms and conditions of employment.
So, Tom, while it's lovely that you'd like Dr. Olson to present a plan that's gonna go take us from phase one to phase five, whatever, whatever you want to call it, that's not feasible. That is not publicly feasible. I hear you on it, but we can't do it. And if you had just called Dr. Olson and asked him, I'm talking right now. If you had talked, if you had called him up and asked him any of these questions, you would have had all the answers because several of the rest of us have done that. That's not my problem. That is yours, Tom. You own that.
Okay, well, Rick.
You can't bring the district into a place where we're gonna be in a legal issue by talking about this publicly. Dr. Olson's doing this for a reason, at the advice of our council.
First of all, Rick, it's not at the advice of our council. Our council just said to you right now in this open meeting, that we don't need, for every decision we make, we don't need approval for every decision we make. And if, and for Dr. Olson to put a plan out there, a plan he feels is the plan he wants, doesn't violate anything. This is him saying, "This is the plan I'm proposing." Then he can go and talk to whoever he wants about it. There is no violation by proposing a plan. And I shouldn't have to pick up the phone and call the superintendent to ask him what his plan is. The plan should be sent to me. Say, "Hey, what do you think about this?" But if this is, if this is the way the board wants it to happen, I have no problem calling Dr. Olson every day and asking him what the plan is and giving him my opinion. But Dr. Olson doesn't have to do anything with my opinion under the process that you're proposing. All he's gotta do is listen to me. But at a board meeting, we have the opportunity to discuss it and then vote on it. And if the majority of the board votes one way, and I'm not voting in that direction, that's okay, so be it. But it's done transparently, out in the open, and we do it the way we should be doing it. But no, there is no violation of anything to put forth a plan of this is how I think our district should move forward. And if there's organizations out there, unions that, that want to object to that plan, let them do it. Let them object to it.
So where do we go from here? Tony, I'm curious how other districts are handling it. I mean, I know if, there's never an apples-to-apples comparison with districts to district, but how are other districts handling it with the same? I mean, everybody's got collective bargaining units, and everybody's got issues in having to bargain for certain aspects of these plans that are coming out. How are other districts doing it? Generally?
I would be, first of all, I, I would just like to say that I'd be much more comfortable having this conversation in closed session if it's about collective bargaining about our associations instead of at a public, in, in, in the open session. So I would ask the board to please consider that if we want to have dialogue around this issue, that you make a motion to move into a session under the collective bargaining exception.
Tom, you want to do that?
I'm available anytime.
Right now?
Right now is good for me.
The only issue, I gotta look at MJ on this one. They're.
Yes, I, I'll need to spin up a meeting, and I will, uh, send the board the link to join the meeting. How's that?
All right.
Does everyone want to do this, though?
Well, yeah, I know, we need to, right. That's a good point, Denise. Yeah, we need to ask that question. And then also, Eric, are, is there, is there administration that's on this call right now that you don't necessarily need to stick around for this? I would ask that, you don't have to answer that just yet, but I agree, Denise, that we need to find out whether anybody wants to do that right now.
We also have a final public comment if you want me to read it.
Okay, yeah, just in a second. But I just want to hear from board members just going around the horn. Um, I know this is not a vote. I just want to hear if you want to stick around and do a closed session right now on this. So Larry, I'm gonna start with you. Do you want to stick around to do a closed? Larry? I think his video stuck.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Carol, do you want to stick around?
Yes.
Okay, Denise, I'm guessing, well, actually, I'm not guessing. Denise, what do you, what do you want to do?
Don't guess.
I'm not guessing.
I, I do not need to stick around.
Okay. Uh, Fred, I'm just going in order of as I see on the screen here. You want to stick around to talk?
I, I will. I just questioned the wisdom at this late hour with, uh, maybe cooler heads will prevail. But, uh, if you guys want to talk, I'll talk.
Okay, Rebecca?
I'm in, I'm on Fred's team.
Well, uh, I, I guess I, I'm with you on that. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not in any good emotional place to do it right now myself, but, I'm hearing some board members here.
Larry's back. I think Larry looks like he's moving again.
Yeah, Larry, you up for going into closed session?
I, I'm still alive and fully awake. No. Frankly, two board meetings ago, we had a lengthy discussion on, on what Dr. Olson was going to do, and he provided a plan for us, and he asked us to provide input, and we did. And, um, I've had several conversations with Dr. Olson, and, um, I understand where he's going, and I understand about the collective bargaining. So no, I don't need to go into closed session.
Okay. So the only thing I'm, I'm cognizant of right now is that I've heard at least a couple of board members seem to want us to get involved, and I fear that if we don't have this conversation tonight, I'm not sure how we're gonna be able to tee it up for the next time around, because unless we're gonna call an emergency board meeting and do this next week, um, which I'm fine with doing as well. We can do that. And we can have the sole issue on the board meeting, that, if that's where we want to go. So does that sound like a better alternative when we're fresher and not ticked off right now?
I'm fine with either way.
I, I personally don't think this is a very long conversation. Uh, so probably doing it tonight would probably be the best idea. We go into closed, we discuss it.
Okay. So I've got a, two noes, three, "I'll do it if I have tos," and two yeses. So I, I guess that means we're gonna do it. So now we're gonna take a vote, and, and the, "I don't know if I want tos" could turn to noes when we take the vote, so we'll see.
Yeah, and I just want to be very clear about the limited scope of the session discussion we're gonna be having. It's going to be solely about the labor issues.
Right, yeah, we're not gonna be talking about this big picture issue, right? It's just the labor issues. All right, Natasha, do you want to read the comment that you received on this issue? I assume it's on this issue, right?
Sure, well, the comment is from Karen Heine. "Is there a reason why Tom Sotos is not visible? I only hear a voice." End of comment.
Yeah, my camera, my camera's not working on my phone.
All right, somebody want to make, uh, Tony, what's the section for collective bargaining to see? Sorry.
You can cite the reason, just that.
All right, all right, so, so I move that the Board of Education can, or, um, convene a closed session, uh, remove itself from open session right now, and convene a closed session, under the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss matters related to collective bargaining.
I say again.
Tom's got the second. Any discussion on that? Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Biagi?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Pearl?
No.
Salas, yes. Sanchez?
No.
Riles?
No.
Four, three?
Correct, motion carries.
Okay, we're going into closed session. So MJ, you're gonna send a meeting notice to, uh, to the board, and whoever needs to be there for a closed session, correct?
Yeah, who else needs to be there?
Um, I think it, uh, Tony Louiezy, obviously, myself, and I'd like Joel to stay, but I think every, you know, everybody else can go with the exception of MJ just helping us out.
Yep.
And didn't we have a problem one other time where this call timed out or something? We couldn't go back to it. I just want to make sure. I think we had that trouble.
So, Tony, do we, do we need to, yeah, you're still there. Tony, do we need to come back into clo, into open again officially? We do, okay. I know, I mean, I know the answer in the past. I know some boards have not been doing that lately, because stuff, and, yeah. All right, so we're gonna have to come back to open. So, so MJ, this link will hopefully still, the, the link we're on right now will hopefully still work on the backend, right, to come back to open?
Yeah, I'll extend the time.
Okay, all right.
Not too long. Okay.
All right, see you on the other end.
All right.
And you're on.
All right, it's 12:03 AM on October 9th. The board is out of closed session. Uh, it went into closed session about an hour or so ago on collective bargaining matters. We're out right now. Board is not taking any action as a result of what transpired in closed session, and so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second.
Rebecca, a second, right?
Yep, that was me.
Okay, I think Fred and Tom had the tie for, uh, the motion, so Carol, however, you want to mark that?
I think I heard Fred first, so Fred for the most.
Fred and Rebecca for the second, yep. All right, and roll call vote, please.
Um, Biagi?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Salas, yes. Sanchez?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's 12:04 AM.